All right, we will now call the city council regular meeting to order, March 22nd. Please rise to invocation and pleading allegiance, and we get from given by Councilwoman, uh, Burley.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come before you on this afternoon, Father God, giving you glory, giving you praise. Fathers, we gather together tonight in this building, Father, we ask that you in the name of Jesus, God, and keep us, Father God. God, our minds, Father God, that we will be totally, totally submissive to you, Father God, and decisions that have been made, Father God, that we will put them in your hands, Father God. Be with each and every person in this building tonight, Father God, guide them, keep them safe, Father God, and that this city of Avon Park, and the county of Howard, grow together, Father God, in love, in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, into this book, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will please call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Mayor Anderson?
Here.
Thank you. First up, we have the confirmation, Donate Life Month. Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life, and whereas more than thirty-nine thousand Americans receive a life-saving organ transplant every year, and whereas a new patient is added to the national patient waiting list for an organ transplant every ten minutes, and whereas over a hundred and thousands, over a hundred and eight thousand men, women, and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplant, plant, transplantation, of which nearly five thousand are in the west and southwest Florida area, and whereas an average of twenty-two people die every day awaiting an organ transplant that does not come in, in time, and whereas one organ, tissue, and eye donor can potentially save or enhance the lives of more than seventy-five people, and whereas everyone in potential organ, eyes, and tissue donors can register their wish to save lives through organ and tissue donation at www.donatelifeflorida.org, or on their driver's license. Now therefore, I, Garrett Anderson, Mayor of the City of Avon Park, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2021, as Donate Life Month. Next up, item number five. We have the Sheriff's Office, discussion of LE Services, before the city manager and sheriff. We have them with us tonight. Sheriff Blackman, welcome.
Thank you, good afternoon. Hope everybody's doing good this afternoon. Thank you for allowing me time on the agenda. I just wanted to come and touch base. It was November ninth of last year when we were here, and we kind of put together a proposal and some, some things that needed to come before the council. At that time, there was no real discussion as to how we were going to move forward. We're now a hundred and fifty days into it. My staff and I are, we're in a process of building our budget for the 2122 year, and we need some direction from you guys about if you're going to move forward with the Sheriff's Office or move forward with the Department of Health, from some individual folks, but not anything official. So we would kind of here tonight to, to start moving forward, or let us know which way you'd like to go. So, thank you all for here.
Very good.
I, uh, I told and asked the city manager if it was okay if I went and met with Sheriff Blackman a couple of weeks ago. I felt that we're going to have to start dealing with our budget also in a couple of months. I think that one, one of the things we need to start to lock down because we have so many issues going on, that we need to make a decision on what we're going to do with the law enforcement and law enforcement, the Sheriff's Department. So, I met with Sheriff Blackman and finally agreed to, and we had a nice, friendly discussion, and we threw away some ideas, threw around some ideas, and I thought that he was very welcoming to me. And, uh, though I saw him as a friend, so I thought it was time to maybe this council move forward, or make a decision on what we're going to do. And, uh, some of the things we talked about is that, uh, I knew that his budget was coming up, and ours is going to be coming soon. I think we need, we can lock that down before we get into the rest, rest of our budget discussions. It would be a good idea to start that process sooner instead of waiting till the last minute, as well as to acknowledge the fact that he made his presentation, and I think it was right. Shouldn't wait any longer. And so we even discussed some of the things that he had, the three-four-year term. So we even thought about possibly maybe we need to have a four-year contract. Well, that's whatever suits our needs. But I think that, uh, one thing I might away with is that Sheriff Black definitely assured me that he's going to be fair to the city, and I believe him, and I think that he's going to be, you know, continue to be a great asset, as an honor that I gave everybody. Already put in some extra field people to do some medical cleanup in the county, and did a great job in making twenty-five percent increase in rest in almost every single area. So I felt it was time for us to, to move forward, and I think that we're ready to do that. I talked to the city manager afterwards, and, uh, we had a great discussion about that. So, I, I'd like to make the motion that we go ahead and let Sheriff Blackman know that him and his department, uh, welcomes to continue as a law enforcement for, uh, at least a year, if not a four years. And I, I personally also agree with discussing with the city manager, that I thought that he would be, uh, best suited to go ahead and negotiate that contract, because he knows a lot of things about the Sheriff's Department I don't know, although I did learn some with our meeting that we had two weeks ago. So I personally would like to go ahead and move forward and make the motion to let this honest guy, Sheriff, Sheriff Blackman know that we're going to continue with his law enforcement services for Avon Park, and to let the city manager go in and start the process of negotiating, uh, a contract that is fair to us, and maybe something we could do in, uh, different, maybe level increments where you're still shopping, but they know all at once. I think that he's able to do that, and I think we could, uh, I think we have a great opportunity here. So I move forward with that motion today.
Let's clarify, it's more of a motion of intent?
Oh, sorry. I make the motion to continue Avon Park, so that honest guy, Sheriff's Department, be a law enforcement.
Second.
And letting the city manager negotiate the contract?
The city manager negotiate.
Do you still second that?
Yeah, second.
Okay. Do we have a motion and a second? Obviously, we don't have a contract before, so it's not as if we could execute a, your contract right now. Um, so I guess more or less a, a motion of intent, that that's the direction that we intend to go, and that our city manager will reach out to you and negotiate that contract on our behalf, and bring something to us that we can approve it.
Absolutely.
So, moments, council is all aware of that?
I, I do have some, you can discuss just really quick before we do the, the vote, right? Um, I know at the last, when you were here back in November, you had, um, provided some definitive numbers of mandated increases that you would be looking for from our budget. And I wanted to ask the city manager, I mean, that is really the crux of any negotiation. I mean, have you looked at the budget to see where those areas might be adjusted?
In our budget, or what?
No, yours, ours.
In ours?
Yeah.
Or a new contract?
If in our current budget to find the money that, that he's looking for? We haven't had a chance, actually, Danielle was working with, um, with John Davis on a, as I recall, he said he would be willing to time it to accommodate our budget. You know, I'm sure he's not talking about four years, five years, but maybe, you know, if you can want. Uh, because you, this budget would take a tremendous change, I would think, as opposed to trying to work it into the next budget. Oh yeah, so that's what we meant.
So, so I guess my question is this, if, you know, obviously we would be working in good faith, and if we're trying to find where we're going to cut to increase the budget requirements that we want, and those monies are not available this coming fiscal year, because likely it will be a tax increase, um, it won't happen until the following fiscal year. So, I don't know how flexible you are in that whole realm of discussion, because I would, I would not want to go into agreement knowing that we don't have the money, and then again, we're going to be in the same predicament next year, and, you know, you'll be back, and, and then we're still going to be behind the eight ball, and nothing's happened, no traction's happened, and I don't want to be with zero traction.
Sure. So, I, I think in your statement, although it was, is what was your intent there? It's not what I want, it's what citizens need for their protection. I mean, I think there's a big difference there. Uh, and, and we are certainly willing, my conversation with Mr. Bernard, and I think I had somewhat of a conversation with, with Mr. Schrader, uh, that we are, we are flexible. We know we're asking for, uh, one point one million dollars roughly, to deliver one point one million dollars to get where we need to be, uh, in addition to your current one point four million. So I, I'm not unrealistic to realize that y'all can't come up with that at one time, especially in the middle of a fiscal year. Uh, so we're, we will be definitely flexible and trying to work with that together so that we can get there, where we need to be, where we exist.
So the intent would be for a one-year contract or a four-year contract?
I think that's a go.
Because if it's just one-year contract, we don't come up with the money, then he doesn't get anything.
I think it would need to be a multi-year contract.
Yeah, it would have to be multi-year.
As many years as it needs to get to where we actually need to be. So whether that be two years, three years, whatever it is.
With step increases.
Correct. I think you're, I think you're getting into contract talks.
Right.
The intent tonight is to say, are you guys wanting to stay with us? Right? You're wanting to go a different direction. So if we can get an official notice on that, then we can start really putting some, some numbers to paper.
Well, we have a motion, then a second on the floor. Anything you need to add? Seeing that, we will call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
I will abstain from the voting. You can speak for the others. I will abstain for the voting, from my voting due to the fact that we already recognize that I would, for sure.
Okay.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, four, two to one extension.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you for your time again. I'll wait to hear from Schrader as far as sitting down together and all those. Just thank you again for your time.
Very good.
Appreciate it. Thanks for coming.
All right. Surely you'll just have to fill out a, a extension form. And you just have to fill out a extension form and give the city clerk where you need to go.
Yes, sir.
So clerk has those forms, should invite you.
All right. Next up, we have the consent agenda. Uh, we've got two items there, one's resolution for 2020-01, just renewing the state of emergency. There's no action needed there. Next is the minutes from March 8th, 2021, council regular meeting. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, um, the consent agenda as listed in, uh, C six and seven.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any changes or questions on the minutes? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, and a minute.
Item number eight, we have approval of excavation point E, quote for resurfacing improvements to South Olden Avenue, Public Works Director.
All right, this is part of our street sidewalks and curb repair and street repaving project. And the, uh, the first one that was chosen by our Public Works Supervisor was resurfacing curb improvements to South Olden Avenue.
Okay. We have in here a, quote, twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars for resurfacing. Do we have any questions for staff on this?
Are there going to be additional? I don't know what's in that budget line either, if it's more than twenty-seven thousand or less outward.
You read that, we have quite a list of maybe eight or nine more areas that will be, some of them are less than twenty-five thousand, some are a little bit more than twenty-five thousand. So we, we've already got, uh, David, we put together a very good and comprehensive list, and he's basing that basically on, on, uh, the need for improvements in those road segments, but also the number of people that benefits.
Could we get a copy of that list, because there is a, um, there is a street down the south side that I think you all, the city, went and filled in some potholes, a very short street, and I don't think that street has been done since, with the winter be done.
I, I think I know which one you're talking about, yes, and we'll get to the list.
Thank you. And, and my other thought is that the curbing, you're talking about those little pump things that's on the side of the road to keep the water from doing whatever, whatever?
Correct.
That's what the, the curving, right?
That's part of the improvement, yes, ma'am. Let's go ahead and mitigate any flooding along with our stormwater control program, that is to rehabilitate or stormwater structures, clean out the culverts and the pipes, and do the appropriate paving, go ahead and mitigate the stormwater.
Now this street was put on the listing when? Do you remember when it was put on there?
South Olden Avenue?
Yes.
Uh, this was developed, probably within about the last three to six months.
So you've driven around and scored to see which one has the highest according to the residents in the area?
Absolutely.
You've seen the road and all that?
Yes.
And the reason why I'm leading up to this, because one of the residents that, that lives off of Hell Like Ray from Walden, that's going all the way down to the lake, I think they had came to us about maybe a year ago and asked that those little pump things be put, um, on that street as well.
Is this on Raven Street?
No, this is, this is on, um, Hell Like Ray.
Okay.
Hell Like Ray from Walden all the way down to the lake. And she just brought, the miss, 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 Miss Boone is here tonight, she brought her to my attention. I apologize.
Please send that list to all council members if you don't mind.
Thank you. And by the way, is there also a list of sidewalks and stuff? Is that going to be something separate from this?
He is concentrated on the, on the roads, and the roads and the sidewalks and curbs that are adjacent to it because of the budget, prior to that. Uh, we certainly could look at doing more sidewalks. We have three hundred thousand dollars in street construction, and one hundred thousand dollars in the street curbs and sidewalks.
And then last question, um, you won't be doing milling, you're just going to do resurfacing another later on, right?
Just resurface, that's right.
I have one question also, one minute right? Under, item number four, talks about replacing concrete curb. So we're actually going to put like a three or four inch concrete curb so that that place flows that direction? Or is it just going to raise it with the overlay?
Well, we'll put in a curb, I think the curb has been pinned upon the risk of flooding that area, but I, I, I would show you, I would send the list to all of you to include the curb.
Okay. I know other streets have that, and it works very well.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve the twenty-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars to EPI construction?
So, who?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, and a minute.
When do you expect to start that, so that people know?
On Walden, South Walden, well, it's approved tonight, then, uh, they can go ahead and do EPI. EPI can, uh, go ahead and do it, so.
Now, do we have to have a contract with them for this?
They're already, I think.
Do we have the contract? So I mean, they start like next week, or next three months?
I can't tell you exactly when that will start, but I can go ahead and tell you.
As, as quick as they can, they're a little busy right now.
Yep.
All right. Do we have a motion and a second? We haven't called the roll yet, have we?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. All right. Item number nine, purchase of new garbage truck, Public Works Director again.
Okay, this is in the budget, uh, a, a new front end loader, and we've gotten three quotes for it. It's time to get apple to apple comparison, particularly on the bodies, because they all tend to be different. But the chassis, the most important part, is a Peterbilt five twenty. And, uh, the lowest quote, which gives the public sanitation supervisor everything that he requires in conversations with G mechanics, is the one that we're recommending for. And it's less than the budget amount.
Okay. We have a total price there of two hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and thirty-two dollars. We had a budgeted amount of three hundred thousand. Considerable savings there. Any further questions?
What happens to the older sanitation truck? Is this, is that going to be a backup?
We have, we have five, uh, we have five front ones that are used to move by, and then we have four backups. Uh, what we're going to do with the, with the worst of the backups, we'll probably put it out to auction, and see if we can get a decent price on that. But, uh, you can't do that, we can try, we can test out on secondary markets with another municipality. But I think it's going to have to have some repairs on to it, sitting back in the yard as a spare for reasons, because that varies from cat problems, body problems. We have to have parts loaded on to make it useful again. And they can do in a pinch, but the new ones are going to replace, uh, one of the worst ones on the side of the road.
How's the big red beast?
The big red beast?
The big, big one? We have a huge one, and that one's still good? Is that one, I mean, I remember it being really big, and there was a question about its largess, you know, wearing out tires and being so big. We have a really big one, I remember.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll have to get to the exact model number on it.
No, I don't need to know the model, I just want to know that, I mean, it's still okay, because it's not.
It's still right, and it's still flexing on.
Aren't we on a five-year, uh, replacement on all those vehicles?
Yes, we are.
Yeah, so basically we're replacing one every year.
I just have one question for you. Does this, uh, different type of a truck, or different company purchase, is it going to have an effect on a mechanic's having to learn anything new to work on?
Oh, he, he's, yeah, he's been working very closely with sanitation supervisor to make sure that the parts he gets are as good as he can get than the old trucks. Uh, if somebody's looked at and, and they will further work here.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I make a motion, we approve D nine, purchase of a new garbage truck.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions? We'll call the roll.
Who's second?
For a second.
Oh, Sharon. I can't hear you now.
Ms. Johnson.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can hear you very well.
I know you're good.
We gave her a new microphone. I can hear perfectly fine.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passed, and a minute.
Thank you. Item number ten, approval and execution of construction agreement between city and Dataflow Systems.
Okay, currently, uh, fourteen of our lift stations need upgrades, the data system. Uh, these, this particular purchase will do just that. It will also install some pressure monitors on the water system. So, what we will have now is all thirty-eight of our lift stations working together on the same, uh, on the same platform, some data flow systems. That, that's invaluable, because you can not only see remotely, uh, what the lift stations are doing, which ones are getting full, if you've got overflow, if you've got a break somewhere, but you can actually optimize operation of the lift stations to be used at one time for pumps, and at the same time, allow more storage in the event that you have a big storm, and you won't have overflow on the lift station.
Okay. Now Rick, this involves fourteen lift stations?
Right.
How many are, I mean, are these our fourteen main ones? Or do we have many of them that are already in that system? This is just simply adding two or?
We, it's fourteen of these, and part of two of them are lift stations, but the rest of them are like dual, uh, dual classes. And they have software on them, but it's not functioning correctly, or some of them don't even have software on them. So this, I, I couldn't give you right off the top of my head which lift stations are getting now. I do have this package to be offered, so if you'd like, I could give you more detail for that.
Kind of what I'm getting at is, is this part of a larger plan, that next year you're going to be doing X amount more, so on and so forth?
Well, as far as I know, this gets to pass the next couple of years. I mean, all of these, all of these access and these pipelines will be the latest that they have. Now, it, it's guaranteed in a couple of years, software's going to be upgraded, it's going to be more features. Uh, equipment breaks down, but for the next year, I would anticipate it's going to be after the one.
Okay.
So these systems will be supported at least for the next couple of years?
At least a couple of years. And that's what we're going for. Uh, data flow system is probably the most popular software, uh, branded lift station, uh, data system on the market. It's very well supported from the company, uh, very well known, so, so there's lots of, uh, common knowledge about how to fix them. And even though the proprietary, they're, they're very big, and so getting parts and getting upgrades is not going to be down there.
Do we have a motion to award contract to DFS for a hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars?
So, who?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further questions?
I have several questions, actually. Why do we not do an RFP on this? There's, you know, at least a dozen companies that could have done this. Why didn't you, who, why did you pick this company? Is there a reason? Do you have a relationship with them, or Rick Reed?
No, no, the, the relationship is what the city has with them. And existing twenty-four lift stations and data flow system, there are other delivery tree mates out there, but it would be much more expensive to change out. So the data flow systems won't talk another delivery system. They're, they're, they're basically all, uh, separate units.
There was, there was a sole, uh, sole source certificate as well, right?
I'm sorry?
There was a sole source certificate?
Yes, there was. There was, and I'll go a minimal explaining why, which in my opinion, is to be sticking to data flow system.
These are all radio controls, all right?
That's right.
Uh, I, I believe in the very near future, they're going to come out with a new system that uses the internet, which should be a lot less costly to add and repair, and you won't be hitting the radio towers. And we thought about going that direction in the future, near future, instead of going with additional with this company.
We sure will, and we can come more cost effective to the city, and a lot of, lot, you know, user-friendly, and ease of, lot of repair, and use that we're certainly looking at. Right now, this is, this is the way, it's going to be the most cost effective to the city because of the twenty-four units that we already have, and the control center, the wastewater treatment plant is all data flow system. So this will, this will marry up all of those systems to the main control panel.
Do you know what type of server that control panel is, what model it is?
Uh, I don't know, I don't answer.
But you know if it's able to, uh, continue with future growth? Because I know there's limitations on these. Uh, I believe our server is probably the HSS zero zero one, which is probably the most common. But I, but, uh, I know they have one box that goes up to, uh, two, two dash two, that are quite more costly, as well as on your legacy TCU units of zero zero one. And you talked about the possibility of maybe going through the TCU eight hundred, like a thousand dollar mortage unit. But even on their website, data flow system says that the zero zero one is their best selling. So there's a really, really no reason to look at something upgraded other than that, is that correct?
Uh, we can look into it certainly.
Okay, I, I, I'm just saying that if what they're offering, or the price they're offering, it doesn't make any sense to look at something, you know, more expensive, that this is their best selling piece of equipment. It seems like if other cities are using it, we should stick with that model. But my concern is whether the server is capable of continued growth.
Uh, I, I don't know precisely how many of those stations would pay, but I know there are more inputs too, but I can get that answer to you.
Okay. Because, uh, I hate to put money into a system and then have turn on, come back and put in a, a very expensive new server. And, uh, so I think that that should be something we need to look at quite costly, uh, because if, uh, they come back next year and say, well, we got to do the other dozen or so stations, and now you need to upgrade your server for a couple hundred thousand dollars, then I think we need to look at that decision first.
I mean, that's assuming you could go to some internet-based search and kind of program, right?
Yeah, that's, I believe that's coming out next year.
So.
It's in the plans now.
So I have a question. Will this in any way be, have to get altered again? Because I know that there were some projects that were in the budget, and I remember some talk about changing out something with the screens, um, in the future.
I don't think that's anything.
You know, it's, I don't know if that's part of it, but are any of these things going to have to be altered again? Are there going to be any more retrofitting of this system with whatever we have planned at the wastewater plant?
I can't answer that right off the top of my head. I can tell you that, that software keeps getting upgraded, and there'll be newer and better units, uh, in the future. What we have right now, with these additional units, will work very, very well for the foreseeable future. Not a foreseeable future, maybe five years, might be two years, like ten years, I can't really speak to that.
So when this was gathered, this information, was it based off of a desperate need? Or something that we just wanted to upgrade because we want to upgrade it? I mean, what was the reason behind it? Because I mean, I kind of like where Jim is going. If you're going to wait a year to look at some internet-based thing, then why spend a hundred and forty thousand dollars? Whereas, you know, having the more technology that will be beneficial in the long run, I'd rather pay that for something else that's going to be longer term.
Right, well, the question is, do you want to take care of some problems that we have right now? We do have sewer overflows, we do have, uh, low water pressure areas, and this installation, these fourteen units, what's water pressure sensors, will make remarkable improvements in the system.
So who gathered all of that data, the flows and stuff? Was that engineering? I mean, did you put that?
No, that, that was before my time here.
So this information is based off of, of study or something that was done prior to your arriving and that's how it came about this data flow system?
No, this, this table, data flow system recommendations in this, uh, in this item were done last year before my arrival. It was done by other works and it was done by Dataflow Systems.
Is that Rick Reed that did that?
Yes, sir.
Well, do you realize that in the building carryout services on the fourteen TCU semi-units, it actually has the TCU eight hundred? Why are we using the TCU zero zero one?
I'll have to get back to it.
Why don't we just, uh, table this until you can have an opportunity to get all the information? Is that agreeable?
That's a, that's a, working hours right there.
Unless we all look no. Unless, unless we all look no.
There's not enough information, you don't have enough information, I don't think.
Hey, Ray?
Yeah?
My, my, my concern is that the, um, along with, with now listening to what they're saying, is that the, the study was done. My question to you is, if my understanding is correct, so you did not verify any of this confirmation?
I did not, yeah, I did not.
Do we have a motion to postpone indefinitely until staff can have, uh?
I saw a move.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion to postpone. Any further questions on that? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Yeah, the mayor, Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Rick, do you have all the information you need, uh, from us, what we're looking for?
Uh, I sure do, a lot of them, we know, we can take them up. And I, I may be able to arrange for them to have an appreciation.
Perfect, okay. Very good, thank you. All right. Moving on to item number eleven. We have the public hearing, first reading. It won't be a public hearing, it'll be a first reading, first ordinance, oh two dash twenty twenty-one.
Okay, so, um, I, I saw that, um, it's a form of your panel since they sent a, uh, PowerPoint, do we have that?
Yes, sir. Jennifer, you'll have to tell me again which one of these is it?
I'll give you six guys.
Is it? Welcome. Please give your name and address for the record there.
Good evening. Uh, for the record, Jennifer Coder Salisbury with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council, uh, five 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 East Church Street, Bartow. Um, also with me tonight is Dana Riddell. And she has joined our staff as the senior planner, so you'll be seeing how her as well.
Welcome, Dana.
Yes, sir.
You want to go through?
So which, which PowerPoint of the two?
This, this one is correct, the one that's up now, thank you.
Jennifer, before you go, we have three different, um, sets of ordinance language in here and they've all been altered. And I think Jerry had said that the last one that has his name on it, are you going to be going over the one that we, which one are you going to go over?
I would like to, uh, go over the one that was in your original packet that has yellow highlighting on it and then I'll turn, turn it over to the city attorney. I just have a briefing of a few slides to give you an overview of the planning and zoning board's actions on March ninth, I believe.
Sorry?
Yeah, just to explain, um, had the original, uh, ordinance which I did and then, um, six of the regional planning council, their, the zoning portion of it, when they took it to the PNC, that original ordinance. And, uh, that was, um, um, they modified it. She's going to go over those modifications and, um, ordinance. But as speaker of the phone conference today, I, you know, I didn't like the way that they had done the transient merchants. And, uh, because we didn't want to think of where you, I didn't want to think of where you can section it as then, but I missed modifications which still interpret the modifications they made into the new document, but actually do it in a better way. So I'll go over that when she's done.
Okay.
Uh, if you can go to the next slide. Thank you. Um, so the planning and zoning board did hold a public hearing on March twenty-first and, uh, they did have some items that they would like to recommend changes to the city council with. And then they had also, um, also referred some items to the city attorney as well for his input. And then we can go to the next slide. Um, the first change, uh, was in definitions and they recommended removing the definition of direct and indirect competition. Uh, they felt those definitions confused things when you're talking about restaurants, if you're serving tacos or pizza. It, they felt like the double definitions just got too confusing and they recommended removing that. Um, they also recommended relocating the definition of transient merchants from chapter seventy to, um, section, uh, twenty-six dash eighty. And the city attorney will talk about that a little bit more. I think he made some revisions to clarify that, which met the intent of the planning and zoning board, uh, but also, uh, kept the intent in chapter seventy. And then we can go to the next slide. Um, on section twenty-six dash eighty-one, um, they had recommended changing letter D. And in this wording here originally, there were references to direct and indirect competition, which they felt were confusing. Uh, so in this location, they basically said, uh, none of the mobile food dispensing vehicles shall be placed less than a thousand feet from the nearest restaurant. Uh, before the wording had indirect and direct competition. This is what they would recommend as clarification. Um, they left in the distance shall be measured by the following, the shortest route of ordinary pedestrian travel along a public thoroughfare, uh, to the main entrance. And then they added that a mobile food dispensing vehicle may be located on the same parcel as an existing restaurant with written permission from the tenants of the permanent restaurant. Uh, whereas before that wouldn't be allowed, you had to be further away. So they felt like as long as the existing restaurant, the tenant said it's okay and you have signed approval, then they felt it should be allowed. And then, uh, also in section twenty-six dash eighty-one, um, they recommended, uh, adding to letter H, uh, in addition to, um, displaying, uh, on the mobile food vending, dispensing facility, all the licensing, sanitary certificates also include the ordinance that would be approved here. So if there's any questions, you also have the mobile food vending ordinance on the food truck, in case there are any questions.
I don't know how many of these are going to be, but I just want to ask Jerry before you go on to the next one. Is that going to include as well permission from the property owner? Would that be part of that information there?
Well, it, the, um.
You know, if I'm going to park my taco truck at the temp factory, I mean, there needs to be alert from them or anyone else?
I think, you know, that would be, that would be risky for them no matter what. I, I, I'm not sure we need those because, I mean, it's only, it's only part of the restaurant. I think the restaurant would have something.
Yeah, but I mean, we have, for example, over the weekend, there was a taco truck at a closed gas station. So that gas station likely didn't give permission for that. So wouldn't there also need to be a letter from the owner of the property that says you are okay to be here?
Yeah, we can make that change.
In fact, you some restaurants that are owned by different businesses right next door. Like the one, I think, uh, twenty-seven, I'm right. That's owned by the office.
So I'm just going to change it to, uh, then, rather than there's all this discussion about, which is who is the owner of the parcel that, that risked permission to own the parcel?
And Dana just pointed out to me that's actually also on, in, on letter G on page three of sixteen, mobile food dispensing vehicles shall have available for review at the location, a signed approval from the private property.
So here, what you're doing is under D, you're just adding the fact that the occupant needs to approve it as well as the owner. Okay. So we're okay with that.
Can I ask you one question before you move on? Simple one. To me, a mobile food dispensing vehicle is found like they're selling prepared food, not actually cooking the food on site. Is that not true or there are grippings or what exactly is that?
That's actually a statutory definition for mobile food truck with prepared food on, uh, at the site. Lunch trucks, as we refer to, the ones that, that, you know, drive location to location with prepared foods already prepared. They, uh, they do allow the hot dogs to be made on, uh, onsite with food trucks, but, you know, mostly it's, it's sealed sandwiches and drinks and things like that.
Okay.
But it's going to change anyway because I, I made, I, I've changed the.
And I'll, I'll wait for your change.
Yeah, just, just in order to incorporate changes they want with regard to transient merchants.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, uh, we can go to the next slide, please. Uh, in section twenty-six dash eighty-three, um, this addresses the parking time allowed for the, the food trucks, just to make it easier to say at this point. Um, and they changed the hours and days of operation to Monday through Friday, seven AM to three PM. Uh, it had been a provision also for weekends, which they did go ahead and change. They felt like Monday through Friday, seven AM to three PM should be the, the hours for parking for the food trucks.
Things, things about that, that time period, because that is, that's pretty strict time period.
Yeah, so I, I have a lot of, uh, issues with this, but I'm just thinking probably best just to make it through the presentation before we start hacking it up and.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. I, I have issues too, go ahead.
Uh, then in section twenty-six dash eighty-four, um, regarding general prohibit, prohibitions and regulations, uh, again, they relocated, um, provisions for transient merchants from chapter seventy, but again, the city attorney has done some cleanup, which we'll come back to. And, uh, then also they had added transient merchants to the land development code, section two point oh four point oh two. Um, and again, uh, the city attorney did some cleanup there, uh, to make that work. And then one more slide. Um, the last changes were changes to the time limit from garage sales. And they changed it from two consecutive days where you can have a garage sale to three consecutive days, thinking that Friday, Saturday, Sunday may work for some folks. And then that change, uh, came through to the next section seventy dash fifty-one, uh, changes the time limit for garage, porch, patio, yard, similar types of sales, again, from two consecutive days to three. And that is a summary of the changes the planning and zoning board had.
Okay, so, um, the package that you were handed out, uh, the next one that says viewer and top. This one here?
Thank you, Jennifer.
Well, I had, yeah, thank you. Well, I had, uh, an issue with this, they want to remove, uh, transient merchants for peddlers and, uh, canvases. And, uh, I, uh, they put it into the food, uh, trucks section. And, uh, although there are other, um, food merchants that are transient that, um, are not the mobile food truck dispensing vehicles that you're now statutory regulating and limited our regulation. It was, it seemed to me like, you know, we also have others. We have people that sell carpets on the side of the road, we have fireworks sales, there's all kinds of sales other than food, food items. So, um, I, I basically to incorporate the intent of what they were trying to do, I made the changes that are here. So I changed the short title and, um, basically pointed out it's itinerary in transient sale of goods and merchandise, including making the, the ordinance broader to pick up, uh, you know, uh, those types of, uh, businesses, the, uh. And then, uh, I changed the title under section one, under the first page, from, uh, food trucks to transient food sales, okay? So now, uh, this whole chapter, which we had called food trucks, is transient food sales. And, uh, the reason for that is, is I looked it over, um, what they were referring to as transient merchants really, um, could be a, include transient trucks. That's a sub, subsection of that. So I, I just made everything that except for what prohibited by statute, which is we can't require them to register, we can't require them to, to pay permit fees or the night stuff. So I just, um, uh, changed that to a lot to, uh, specifically, which is, I don't want to get too below. So all the things that have changed in here, uh, are what they suggested. So we're going to make changes that, that, I changed all of mobile food, food trucks, um, discussion to, um, transient food sales. And, uh, with, with, of course, those vehicles being a subsection of that, except for where it talks, uh, about the, um, city manager approving and, and number being required to get a permit or license as, as provided by city ordinance, which right now, you know, we don't have anything that under that for that. But that's something you're going to want to include for like carpet sales. You may want additional regulations with regard to fireworks sales. I, I don't know if it's allowed and it's not allowed, but that, that's certainly something that, that does have to transit sale. But as for food, it would include vegetable trucks, um, you know, um, coffee sales on the side of the road, somebody selling flavored nuts and stuff like that. Anything that's not a, 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 a mobile food, uh, uh, dispensing vehicle, um, would have to get registered and, uh, through the city manager's office, so.
So what you're saying is that those things would be allowed because you're putting them in here, so we could have all kinds of, you name it.
Where you are.
Well, not necessarily, you're not allowed to open up a, a fruit stand on, on, on an existing property unless it's part of the existing business. So that's, you don't, because a permit aren't issued for that, I mean.
Part of it, there's some reason why you can't still do that. You need to provide, you know, um, provide for that in the, uh, the code.
So what you're saying is even though it's not in the code, you will allow it to where the city manager could say it's okay?
Well, I would take it out of the definition altogether and say, well, does not include. Uh, we'd have to also say that under, um, transient merchants, because it would be a transient merchant as well. But if that's something you all want to do.
I, I personally prefer the food truck. I, I don't want to see vendors just popping up left and right, you know, you know, you'd be inundated with all, and I just don't like the appearance of it, you know? Plus, we've got businesses that KOLs, millage, they pay their insurance and their employees and their water and everything, and then we're just going to allow someone to set up shop?
I'm totally fine with that. And so, so what you're doing basically is going back to the original ordinance that, that we, that we did, back to the original ordinance and doing away with the changes that they paid for the most part, because.
So the only.
They're, they're, they wanted to include transient merchants and regulate them in the same manner as you did vehicles. That's, that's what I understood, is that correct? Yeah, so, I mean, that's, that's what I did.
That to me seems overwhelming for staff and I'm not saying that it's not impossible for them to do, but it's also vendors left and right. I mean, it ends up looking like a, like a bazaar.
At least you want to know where they are.
Yeah, but.
Well, but, you know, bear in mind, they, they have to have permission to be in a property. Because it's not, I mean, I, you know, where I live, not, not my neighborhood, but, but out, you know, the road is, they have vegetable trucks. So it's not something I haven't seen before. But, but if you don't want them, then we'll need to exclude those specifically, you know, from this, you know, or, or, how do you definition both this sec, this chapter and seventy to exclude that?
I kind of like the direction that Maria's going with it, that, that the original intent of this was for food trucks. So let's try food trucks. Then if food trucks succeed well, and we want to add another thing, we can start adding another thing. But I don't, I don't think that we want to necessarily open up floodgates and everything.
All right, so this would be the only food trucks, we, we then.
And that's why.
Three items of any type, uh, on the streets. And then you, you allow a, um, lunch trucks to then, then at construction sites and stuff.
As a law by statute.
Right. So, and you would exclude all other sale of food on the side.
Yep.
Okay, I think that's what we talked about once, is do it step by step. And one of the issue I have about food trucks that actually make the food is, you know, we basically have a restaurant on almost every block on Main Street. And so.
These will go on Main Street.
If they found a way to go on Main Street with a thousand feet, that's a direct competition. Now, if it's a food truck that doesn't interfere with any other restaurant, like a coffee truck, they don't have a coffee store, I wouldn't. I wouldn't mind a coffee truck, because they don't have, you know, they don't have a Starbucks.
To be clear, if you wanna have a produce store, the definition of produce store basically means it's inside of a structure, right?
Right, that's fine.
That structure can be open, but it still just has to be inside a structure. And this, basically this opens it up to having, let's say, a pickup truck, with a lot of stuff in back of the pickup truck parked on the side of the road.
Which is a typical way to do that.
And what we're saying, what we're basically saying, what we have now, you have to be in a structure, right?
Yeah, the food truck has to be a structure.
So if you wanna have a farmer's market, it has to be under a roof somewhere, right?
Okay.
That's what we currently have. This would have allowed it to where you could have your produce in the back of the truck, parked on the side of the road with no cover, or no, not inside a building or anything.
Isn't that what they do now? No?
No, not legally.
Yeah, we'll say not legally. Oh, you see that outside the city limits, the county allows that everywhere.
No, inside, just in Cornell and Memorial, on that one corner, there's always somebody that was selling something.
And if it's under the city limits currently, it's not.
So you said that one won't be allowed?
It's not, it's not currently allowed now.
Is that, is that in C-one or C-two?
That corner?
Because I think that's the only place it's allowed anyway.
Yeah, it's commercial, it's a commercial corner.
But that would not be allowed under what they're proposing.
Under what they're proposing, but not currently.
I wonder what you, what you and Maria are proposing. This truck, that would not be allowed, other than what this is proposing, that would be allowed, but it'd be allowed in the places you allow food trucks.
Right, but under our current statute, it's not allowed right now, right?
Right.
Correct. It has to be in course.
Even in the commercial zoning area, correct.
We're basically just talking about taking one step at a time.
I thought Rick, I looked like Rick had something to say there.
Okay, so, do we have any kind of consensus thus far on if we wanna include all merchants or just stick with food trucks?
I'm with food trucks for now.
Me too. It's talking about food trucks. I can't hear you.
It's the tacos.
Food trucks?
We're talking about food trucks now. I'm kinda leaning toward include all, what did the planning and zoning people say? They wanted to include everybody? Is that what they're requesting us to do?
In C-one and C-two, and I-one and I-two, yes.
So I'm kinda like going with, speaking with their recommendation.
Okay.
Well, I, I think, so it's up for first reading, if you wanna postpone it. I think, or you can read it, and if it fails, and we'll take another shot at it.
Well, let's see what else we can't live with.
Okay.
And drive a hammer down a little bit.
Well, that's pretty substantial, if what you suggest is passed, it's gonna have to go back to three and have some specific exclusions after what goes in.
Right.
So when the ordinance, a question, isn't the short title, is that what's advertised in the paper?
Yes, it is.
So what's in red was not in the advertising?
No, it wasn't advertised, it was on the first reading.
Okay, so, okay. So you would be, if the majority of the council opted out of the transient, then the red area would be removed in that short title?
Right. And we'd have to tweak the one that Central Florida and I did earlier to make some exclusions under definitions.
I have a question, Jennifer, you're saying that the P and Z board recommended transient vendors?
Jennifer, can you please come back up?
I mean, I know that that's what we're discussing here, but that was a specific thing that they wanted, was transient vendors?
It, it did come up in the discussion, and yes, and I could also defer to other city staff that was there, but part of it was thinking about the person that sells the hot boiled peanuts, for example. So with the mobile food truck ordinance, they would not be included. And so that's how the discussion became discussion about transient merchants as well, and how that type of use, for example, the hot boiled peanuts, may, the city may wanna consider allowing that.
And that's not considered food truck by statute?
That's...
I don't think you can, you can, you know, pick on a specific food type.
No, because you're just giving examples, she's just giving examples.
But yeah, I think, you know, if you want it included, that type of sale, we'd be talking about coffee and nuts and, you know, sandwiches.
What, I'm sorry?
Can you specify, can you pick and choose what foods?
I mean, in my opinion, I would say all cooked foods, or all prepared foods onsite should be part of food trucks, whether it's peanuts, or sandwiches, or whatever.
Wait a minute, the peanut truck is not a, is not a food truck?
No, it's a guy with something boiling right there. I mean, they pop up, they're not supposed to be there, we don't have code enforcement on weekends, so they're gonna continue, right?
Can I, can I interject something?
Please.
Okay. Part of that planning and zoning meeting that they spoke of, I actually brought that up. Whether we're on, working on weekends or not, there is no, we have no teeth, okay? We don't have authority to move people from point A to point B. We can't tell them to look, pack your stuff up and leave, we just can't do that under one sixty-two. We don't have that authority. So if Mr. Herman wants to put his peanut truck up at the old Priest King at the corner of Seventeen A and Memorial, okay, whether he's there in a weekend or whether it's there during the day, there is, I have no recourse. My guys have no recourse, they can't, they can't make him move, they can't call the sheriff's office and tell them to make the move, because that's private property. So what do we do? So we contact the owner of the property, and we give them a ten-day notice while this guy's set up for ten days. Then we have to follow up by a notice of violation, which is another twenty days. And then by the time we get to the magistrate, now let's tack on another twenty-five days on top of that. So he's setting up selling for two, two months straight.
But, but we took care of that with citation, you can use citation.
That we don't have, but yes, citation was solid in.
It's already in there.
Okay, okay, but my question would be, Priest King is a perfect example, that's where people set up all the time, okay? And the place at Twenty-seven Main Street, where the taco truck sets up there. Those, those people don't have permission to be there. So now we have, so it's code enforcement's responsibility to find the owner of the property, send them a letter, get them in touch with the council from the sheriff's office, and say, hey, look, we have an agreement, so if you catch somebody on sight, you know, we have authority to trespass them. I mean, it's just not, people think that we have the authority to just move people, and the problem's gone.
No, I agree, there's not an authority, but you have the authority to cite them.
Cite who?
Cite the food vendor, who, where we're doing it.
And what, and how do we even know, we don't have, what authority do we have to identify them?
But don't you, aren't you supposed to have an occupational license? I mean, if there's no occupation, and you know that that's...
Okay, but code enforcement cites property, we don't cite people. So what, what, what are we gonna, what are we gonna write that person up on then? Are we gonna ask for their driver's, well, we can't do that. They don't have to tell us their name, they don't have to tell us anything, so.
That is an interesting point that I can't say I've ever thought about.
How does, all enforcement can.
How does all of the other towns and municipalities do that?
They don't, you have to, because a lot of these people aren't setting up on locations that are, that have an occupied business, or setting up on locations that are closed down, that's a thing we were, think about. So then, who are we, how can we tell them, look, you're in violation of city ordinance, you need to move on? You know what they're gonna do? Yeah, no, I'm not going to, and then what? It looks like code enforcement isn't doing anything, but yet, what can we do? I'm looking for, I'm looking for teeth, like, to be able to enforce this, but I don't think.
Wasn't there, I'm just, wasn't there a clause that you included in the planning and zoning to where they had the city manager have the authority to make those decisions? Because there wasn't teeth in the code side of things? And we call something about city members having the authority to do that? I mean, who's to say, you know, so hottie dogs can set up on a street corner and start vending, is that what we're saying here?
Well, I don't think it's different than, I'm not, I'm a special magistrate for the city of Anne Marie, and there we've got cases, you know, parking, somebody parks in the right of way, they get cited, they get a citation, they don't get arrested. And same with signs, they're lawful, they, you know, cite the people with the signs up.
How do you identify them? How do you identify somebody parking in the right of way? You can't ask for identification, we don't have that authority. So how do you, what do I write, the tag, or do we file the sheriff's office, and they're not gonna do that, that's not their job? I mean, that's what I'm saying, when they, we can, now, if they're on the city right of way, we should have the authority at that point to tell them, you know, at owner's expense, but there has to be a sign posted there, or you gotta slap us, they can't even do it, they have a seventy-two hour, something that you have to put on their vehicle.
I think that what you're bringing up is far more reaching than just simply this ordinance. So my advice would be, we need to figure all those things out. Between yourself and the city attorney, I'm assuming there shouldn't be any other parties involved, possibly the sheriff's department, but that needs to be fleshed out, is how do we enforce our rules on people? How do we ask them for this information that you're needing? Because without that, none of this means anything.
I, I agree, it's kinda like, I mean, we have a need, obviously, but I don't have a remedy. I can't remedy the situation, I don't have the authority to, unless they're on somebody, unless they're on somebody's property that said, you know what, you can set up, like, for instance, O'Reilly's. Every once in a while, they'll let somebody set up on that, that parking lot to vent, okay? That's great, we can go into O'Reilly's and say, look, you can't do that, that's against city code. And they can be like, okay, well, or you're gonna start, we're gonna end up fining you if you don't. And then, that's our recourse, we can go after O'Reilly's, but when you're going on a city right of way, who are, who moves the victim? The city is, but I can't move somebody off the city right of way, I can't do it legally.
Brenda, you have a point?
Yes, I, I, on the same line that you're thinking on, I'm gonna use a business on Twenty-second. If a person wants to set up a barbecue, whatever, and they, and they get them owner's permission, they're not in a closed building, they are in the back of their truck, or whatever, is that allowed?
It, it's not allowed in this ordinance, yeah.
And, but, okay, but the Florida statute says that you can set up a half an hour, and that we get to pick the zoning, right? The statute is that they can set up a half an hour lunch truck.
Because you can't charge, you can't prohibit them, you can't charge them a registration or licensing fee of any type, and...
For the half-hour ones?
And what?
For the ones that we don't include in an ordinance.
The food truck, the...
Yeah, okay, well, okay, if we could, pretend this ordinance isn't in front of us tonight. What is the law? The statute says that they can set up without our permission, a half an hour, only in industrial areas where there's, like a lunch truck. That's what the statute says.
As long as they have a license for the state.
Okay, so that is allowed, it doesn't talk about, you know, the guy that boils peanuts, and he set up under the statute, right?
We're talking about separate things here, you know, they, they, I don't believe that they regulate those, I don't believe that they regulate things like the barbecue truck and so on, that's for local regulations, county or city. But they do regulate the city, the mobile food dispensing vehicles, and lunch trucks. The, you know, and those two things that they regulate, and of course, the one, the regulation of mobile food, mobile food dispensing vehicles is fairly recent. And they say there, they've removed us from doing what used to be done, which is say, regulate, we had registration requirements and fees and things like that, and we had collected information from them. But here, you know, the regulation, we've got, they have that state license, you get their information off the state license for that, for those trucks. But with regard to the peanuts, I don't know, maybe there might be a health department certificate they have to get, education, get their name off of that, but, you know...
I recommend that we have our code enforcement director and our city attorney hash this out. Let's put this on hold for now, see if we can figure out how to have teeth in any ordinance for that matter.
Well, I, I think we need, before we do that, we need to have clarification regarding where you're gonna go with this, because I can't even begin rewriting unless I know what you want to regulate. If you wanna prohibit the barbecue trucks, the coffee dispensers, the nut dispensers, you know, I know Tennesse, Tampa's full, all that stuff. But if you wanna prohibit those, then we need to let you know, because then I can just, I can make sure that we draft the ordinance to do that. We can't prohibit, the ones the statute would prohibit, I'm good from prohibiting, the others prohibit.
Good evening, I apologize, if I can interject, my name is Vayner Del, senior planner for the record.
This is me.
I wanted to just share a little bit of information from the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and some additional background information that might help us form a direction to go. So, to clarify, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the reason that the Planning and Zoning Commission decided to combine everything under transient merchants, and now redefine as transient food merchants, is just for instances, as Randy was saying, like, for the peanuts, if somebody wants to open up, like, the back of their car, and barbecue, and things of that nature. So, one thing that comes to mind would be Pure Gray on Main Street. I've never actually been down there on a Saturday, but I know that they have those food trucks, I know that they have different vendors. Not all of them come in the form of a truck, some of them set up tables, things of that nature. So, that, I believe, is what their thought process was, when they specifically were talking about transients. They wanted to encompass everyone, although what Jerry is saying is that this Florida statute only pertains to the mobile food vendors from trucks. The Florida statute that basically says that you can regulate it, but you can't, you can't stop it. So, with that being said, the question is, do we encompass them all together as one, as transient food merchants, and allow them to set up using tables, or tents, or other mechanisms, or we only allow the food truck? And Ms. Sutherland, you had a question about whether or not the city manager would have to approve certain things. So, under solicitors, peddlers, canvassers, and transient merchants, as it stands now, you are correct that it does, if it is approved as it stands, that they will need permission from a permit issued by the city manager as a canvasser, solicitor, peddler, or transient merchant. That does not include, right now, the food trucks. So, just to get that distinction between the transient merchants and the food trucks, you're right, we are talking about two different things. We could combine them into one thing, and that's where we need to look at.
But the reality is already there, the other group except for the food trucks. I mean, that's what you're saying, right? So, and we're just trying to combine them into one.
They wanted to, they wanted to put it under food trucks, and I went ahead and took what they wanted to do, and just modified it to a general title of food sales, you know, transient food sales. And that includes the food truck, that includes the nuts, that includes the barbecue, that includes the back of the truck right now.
And right now, if you did the transients, let's just say, they would fall under the hours there right here? That still doesn't have enough teeth for anybody, they could still set up Saturdays and Sundays, because they could still go to it and be locked and set up.
And that's where I was going with this.
Right, so they would still have more grandparents.
They could set up after five o'clock, we're home.
Right.
Who's enforcing that at five o'clock, five-thirty in the afternoon? It's, it's based, yourself policing yourself, which is fine, but I don't, I don't wanna have to come back, like, tomorrow, when I come in to work, and next morning, like, well, they were out there at six o'clock doing food, well, I'm sorry, my guys are home.
To me, they're two totally separate things.
Yeah, I think that's an enforcement issue, you know, it can be dealt with, because, I mean, I know about San Antonio, they, they, they make somebody, you know, to come out on a special time, if somebody does that, or it's a wrong call, you know, type of, type of situation. And they pay them a proper time, or whatever it is, or comp time, come out and do it. But, you know, that goes for anything, really, I mean, if somebody can come in, you can do just not anything after five. Nobody's ever gonna regulate after five. It's not, it really, I mean, it really restricts the enforcement from doing anything.
Can we, I don't know about the rest of you, can we just stick with food trucks for right now, and then you two work out the transient thing? I personally do not wanna see transient, I just think that it's just food poisoning, waiting to be happening. On some occasions, there's no regulation whatsoever, and that turns into selling dolls, and selling pet rocks, and everything else. And I'm all about, you know, protecting the businesses that are here, the ones that pay taxes, the ones that pay insurance, the ones that have employees, and it's unfair to them to have competitors that don't pay anything.
I totally understand, at that point, some of them have got really bad food poisoning for our food truck, so.
I mean, we don't regulate the quality of the food, that would be something that the health department has, but with the food truck, they would have to have something plastered on their truck that says, you know, they have health department inspections, right?
If you're not regulating, and they're not coming into the city to talk to the city manager, who's getting all the information about it, then you have to patrol over whether they have a health department certification, that they could have left their... then you have to patrol over whether they have a health department, you know, certification that they could have left their barbecue ribs out for two days, you know, as far as we know. And, uh, it was apparently with that person too, that got everybody sick, you know, a lot of people got sick in that truck that day. So, um, I just need to know, you know, what's, what's the majority want to do? Do you want to exclude everything but food trucks? Or do you wanna allow things like back-to-the-truck, um, sales of, of barbecue, back-to-the-truck sales of vegetables, back-to-the-truck? Selling peanuts and coffee and things like that? Do you want to do that? Because I can't, I can't really do much. That's all I know what you wanna do with that. Because we, it takes a total rewrite to get to the point we're at. So then we'd have to take it back to where we worked before, under the original ordinance.
Yeah, I, my opinion is that if you're not in a food truck or in a building or as part of a special event, like a farmer's market event or something like that, it doesn't belong in that city. I mean, that's something that's always been out of county my entire life.
My assumption that was the way as well, that everyone else was just doing. My look, I just look the other way half the time because I know that we don't have to bring up that thing.
Watermelon sale and everything, you name it, out, out in the county, different places. That's always been kind of the accepted norm. I, I don't know that that really belongs on the side of the road on, off Main Street.
We're sending them to the presidential. Did somebody make that motion?
I make a motion that we stick to the food trucks for right now and make the ordinance to where it doesn't deal with transients.
Just second. Okay, so, and, and of course, that, you're, you're allowing, uh, the, um, uh, lunch trucks.
So, yeah, I mean, that's already a given, correct, right, under statute. And then Jerry, um, if I can continue on, you're in the second hit, so we just do that one, and then I have another motion, which eventually we need.
Okay, so, let's deal with that one first.
Charlie, you have a question?
I just wanna say, we're gonna go with dealing with food trucks and then we deal with transients. But there are people who sell peanuts. These people do this for a living. This is their lifeline. This is what they do about, is a one now, and they would deal with the other later, correct?
But under, under our current rules right now, they should not be doing that in the city limits.
So they shouldn't be doing it in the city limits?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, got it.
So, the, the, the peanut man, let's speak, I'm determined, he, that's outside the city limits.
Okay.
He, he's been there for nineteen dozen years, and it's always been outside the city limits. That's why nobody ever cared as far as the city's concerned. Everybody knows that you go right outside of town to get your peanut.
Sure do.
I've been, I've been there a hundred times.
We have our peanuts.
Right.
Okay.
So, the motion is to allow food trucks, uh, within the city limits.
Well, that's just, that's just a deal with food trucks and ignore the transient food.
So we're not dealing with food trucks, good.
So we have a motion and we have a second.
And I'm, I'm gonna take out chapter seventy now, the ordinance following the other.
Yeah, yes, yes. Okay, okay.
Ma'am, if you wanna speak, you're more than welcome to come to the microphone, state your name and state your piece. Please, please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Tom Boone. I live at ten twelve South Lake Road, Monroeville.
Yes, ma'am.
A terrible place. You all have never, ever lived in the city. You always have a food truck, a breakfast truck, and a lunch truck, and that's all wrong.
Okay. Yes, sir. Just as she did, just give your name and address for the record.
Yeah, I'm Molly Strickland. I wanna know, we got single dwelling homes in Ammon Park.
Sir, does this pertain to?
It did pertain to something, yes, to me, yeah. I live at one oh nine East Downriver Street, down in the old end of
Single family home.
Do you got any single family homes in Ammon Park?
Yes.
You, where at?
That, that's what the majority of Ammon Park is, is all one A.
Have you woke up at six o'clock in the morning?
Sure, every day.
Have you ever went down Lake Avenue at six?
I have.
Have you ever been stopped, fruit pluses picking people up in houses all the way down Lake Avenue? Then you turn on a lot of streets around here, you stop behind fruit pluses? I ain't got no problem with people having labor camps. And I've lived here since I was seventy-six. And Lake Avenue used to be where you carried your onions, trick-or-treat, and all that stuff. Now, you got labor camps on them, Ammon Park. I was listening to it. We make city, all of you, I mean, I've lived here since seventy-six and owned pretty much a lot of stuff.
Sir, I'm with you, but how does this pertain to food trucks, what I'm getting at?
Well, what pertain to food trucks, the food trucks is the least of your problem.
But that's what we're talking about right now.
I know that, but I'm talking about
If it's not about food trucks, then you can bring it up at the end of the meeting where it says
Well, I, I send them fees, but I, I understand, 'cause I wanted to build a labor camp at all my plants, 'cause I got enough.
Okay, all right, well, if it's not about food trucks, you can't talk on this topic.
Okay, I understand. I understand the whole deal.
All right, anything else pertaining to food trucks? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on that?
The motion is to allow food trucks, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's just the only, yeah, it's
We're narrowing this ordinance to only food trucks.
It's gonna be strictly food trucks.
Yes.
Okay.
And so after, after this ordinance passes, all those A sales of anything else other than out of the food truck that, uh, that's certified by the state is gonna be prohibited, and they can be cited to extend it, and we can find a way to do that.
Oh, okay.
We're not actually passing the ordinance.
Randy is going to disagree with you. Yeah, right.
Right.
Don't we just wonder, you're just, right now, you're passing the ordinance that we need to have one about food trucks, right? Not, are we passing what?
We're just voting to narrow the scope of this ordinance, but we're not actually passing
But you're not talking, you're not talking about the hours or anything, what days?
They're in here. They're in here. We will talk about them.
Okay, that's what I was
All right, we have a motion and a second. We'll call the roll.
Councilmember Ray?
No. I say yes.
Yes?
No, I say not.
Councilmember Ray said no, sure, Councilwoman Shirley Johnson said yes.
Oh, left food trucks.
Councilmember Johnson said yes?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Will she pass four one?
Okay, so you wanna go through, uh, this?
Yes.
Basically, it takes us back to the original, uh, ordinance, but the parts that they also changed, they took out the difference between direct competition and indirect competition. Are you okay with that?
Yes.
I thought you were gonna, now, which one, which one of your pages do you have now?
That's the one that's mark three, uh, that, the ones I had.
What page are you on now at this point?
Front, front page.
Okay.
No, three.
Three or just three?
Three, just three.
Okay, is this the same one that we have in our package here?
The one that says beer at the top of it?
I don't know about that.
No, that's, that's the, that's the modified one.
Okay, so we don't wanna deal with this one anymore. We're gonna go back to some other version, which is number three, or do you have, you have, you have three versions, okay. All right, you got it, three. All right.
So if we go through the things, the changes that they made, they took out direct competition versus definition, A, direct competition or indirect competition. What is your preference on that? Do you wanna go ahead and accept their, their recommendation, or do you wanna leave that in? What it was intended to do, and I, I put it in there, uh, without any correction. Uh, but I put it in there because, you know, certain, if you're selling tacos, you know, should you be, is that not a, a direct competition with a Mexican restaurant? Yeah, if you're selling, you know, pizza on the side of the road, then you're competing with an Italian restaurant. So, don't you want those type of restaurants, those type of food trucks further away from those locations? And somebody's, could be across the street from, you know, McDonald's if they're selling, you know, tacos.
Personally, I don't have a problem with competition. The way I feel about it is that you have a restaurant that does a very good job at a particular thing, that food truck's not gonna be able to stop that. I don't think that having a taco truck next to a taco restaurant is really that big of a deal.
All right, so you would agree to take out the direct competition?
I don't know about that. See, I, I disagree with that one mainly because I'm gonna use the example, example of Dunkin' Donut. I don't think it would be fair for Dunkin' Donut to have a guy that sells coffee for two dollars less parked in the, in the, um, gas station next door to Dunkin' Donut.
Well, I mean, you have Starbucks that sells it for six bucks, and Walmart, or you have, you have McDonald's that sells it for a dollar. The point is, there's different folks that are close.
But the difference is Dunkin' Donut pays village, pays mortgage, they pay occupational license, they have employees, whereas a food truck just shows up and doesn't pay any.
And they have a, a franchise.
So of course you can sell it cheaper.
Hundreds of millions of dollars in the advertising to make a brand.
Yeah, hundreds of millions. It's a franchise. We all know.
It's a franchise of a corporation that puts hundreds of millions in the advertising.
Okay, so you have a private restaurant that sells their goodies as well. I, you know, we're gonna let someone else set up something next door to them that doesn't pay any kind of tax? That has a lower rate to sell their goods because they don't pay for advertising, they don't pay for taxes, and they don't pay occupational license.
The point is for them to be transient, for them not to stay there every day.
But we're not talking transient, we're talking about food trucks.
Right, and if you read further in that ordinance, they can't stay there every day. If you had a food truck that's set up next to a taco stand that sold tacos and they were there every day, day in and day out, same hours, open and close, yes, that would be a problem. But they're not supposed to be there every day. They're supposed to be there one day or two days. They're, they're coming and going. They're never setting up in the same place.
No, oh, this one says five days a week. We don't know what that's gonna be. I've spoken to different businesses in town. I spoke to, um, Little Italy, I spoke to the Olympic, I spoke to different restaurants in town. None of them wanna have anything that's gonna compete with them within whatever feet.
Why would they?
Why would they?
Why, why would they want to invite competition?
Why, why, I'm sorry, I thought you said that you liked the competition.
I'm saying, why would a restaurant want to invite competition? I feel that competition is a good thing. That's what a free market is.
Well, because, you know why? Because I'm loyal to the businesses that support this town. No, I mean, I'm, I'm, my loyalty rests with those that pay taxes, not with the food trucks that are not gonna be here permanently and that don't pay anything.
So the whole point of food trucks is to bring the people.
Right, so, and we haven't designated for, we have it designated for C two, so not C four. So it wouldn't harm anything on Main Street.
I don't have a problem with C four. I don't have a problem with any.
Well, I, I, I do. I think that it's, um, it's a burden to our existing businesses when they struggle already. And, you know, it's easy for a food truck to compete because they can. They're a little more nimble. They don't pay anything. It's just, they just show up and then they leave. They don't like it. They go someplace else and compete with someone else, and go somewhere else and compete with another person. I just think that that's unfair to our local businesses.
Well, I think you're confusing a mobile food truck with a mobile restaurant. They're, they're two totally different ideas.
No, but what I'm looking at in here is the fact that it has a certain distance from, you know, where one will be in, where, where the food truck will be in relation to the existing business.
But what's stopping, use Little Italy, what's stopping a restaurant from buying a property right next to them, calling it Big Italy, selling it for half the price?
Well, the difference there is, is that that person will be paying village, will have a water account, will be paying telecommunications taxes, will be paying all kinds of fees that the other locals that do pay that pay. So the competition there is a little different.
They also have the benefit of being there all the time.
I'm sorry, I'm just not doing, being, you know.
I, I think it doesn't, doesn't sound like you're wanting to agree, uh, uh, with each other. So perhaps if you just made a motion to either accept or reject this direct competition versus indirect competition section here, we can resolve that and see what the council itself thinks. Because they wanted it out, they wanted it strictly a thousand feet, that's it. So it would just be, doesn't matter, uh, whether it's direct competition or indirect competition, one thousand feet through.
And that's fine with me, the power of heat is fine.
Yeah, and I think another thing we have to look at too is when, when a restaurant opens a business in a building, they have to decide whether they wanna build a restaurant right next door to another restaurant that sells the same food items. They have to decide whether that's gonna be competitive or agreeable. And that's why usually you'll see, like, on Main Street, the restaurants are kinda like one block for one because they don't wanna compete with somebody that's close. So they, they chose the place to where they wanted to be because they thought that would be less competition. I know that some businesses like gas stations or food hand joint joints like the park that close to each other because they like the idea for people to choose, they think there's enough choices around, that they'll go across the street whichever you just want to drive to or not.
It's the
But I think the building, if I may, is that they decided to put the restaurant there because they knew that the closest, best closest restaurant was the block away, or three blocks away, or whatever.
Well, what I'm saying is that the premise of it is like a food court in a mall. Everybody goes to the food court to see where all the vendors are, right? So there's a particular place, uh, out front of the Lakeshore Mall and Sebring where there's a whole bunch of restaurants in one particular spot. Everybody goes to that spot where all the restaurants are, right? They're all competing with each other, but it also draws more people to that area because that's where there's more restaurants. So, having, having
In some ways it works, in some ways it doesn't.
Well, I mean, having them spread out is not a good thing. I mean, that's one of the big issues that we even have with our town is the urban sprawl versus being able to walk places. That's one reason why we don't walk down Main Street as much is because we have so many vacancies in between businesses that you wanna get to. You don't wanna walk a half a mile to get to the place where you wanna go. You wanna walk in places where you can have it all within a very small area. So, having more places, having more businesses in one small area is a good thing, creates some more district there. Not a competition, it's more of a traffic driver in my opinion. But why, I've only had business my entire life, so why?
And you can put all of those on some gas station that's empty if they've got a permit from the owner. There'll be plenty of parking for a multitude of food trucks or something like that. As long as they're within a thousand feet of something that's, that, you know, if they're in competition, they're only a thousand feet away.
I make a motion that we take out the direct competition and indirect competition and lower the thousand feet to two hundred feet.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion. Seeing none, we'll call the roll.
Remove the direct and indirect, lower the distance to two hundred feet.
Correct.
Councilmember Ray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Absolutely not.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Will she pass three two?
All right, I got that part. Next.
Okay, um, so, let's see. The next, I think the next item would be the, the, the one that changed the name of the transient, um, genver was the, uh, the time that drove it, right? I mean, it's not related to those two items.
Uh, that's correct, that, uh, in the original packet, that'll be on page four of sixteen, section twenty-six dash eighty-three, letter V.
The original packet, four sixteen.
In the original ordinance, I had it from seven AM to seven PM. They changed it from seven AM to three PM.
Okay, and they also changed it from having the provision for the weekend only being Monday to Friday. So do we wanna change the time? I say we should.
Yes.
Ideas of how, how to expand it? Any ideas? I would say that a lot of the food truck operations tend to happen on the weekend. In the night.
At night?
You have two, the two basically different crowds. I'm, I've never really been involved with the breakfast trucks per se, but with lunch trucks, you have large businesses like, uh, car dealers, things like that. You get lunch people that go in there. There's two hundred people working there. They service however many wanna eat quickly. Some wanna leave, some don't, some brought their lunch. Uh, and then you've got the other crowd, which is the nighttime crowd, the people who are more walking around, you know, enjoying the, the night kind of thing.
I know on the south side, that's okay, because they're, they're only one or two restaurants that's there, they close up on Black Bell Dog. They serve breakfast and lunch, and then, um, evening time, you gotta go somewhere else. But on the south side, there's normally a, a truck there. So I, I agree with you on that.
A lot of, a lot of hotels, uh, I know for a fact will have, like, uh, you know, Tuesday night is, is truck night. And now they'll invite four or five food trucks to come in and, you know, stay till eight or nine o'clock or whatever. Just as a, kind of an odd thing that attracts people, you know. I would say probably keep it in line with what, what, when do people normally eat? You know, you don't wanna encourage people, firstly, I don't think you wanna encourage people to be out till two in the morning.
No.
But, you know, normal people probably eat at least until nine PM, I would say, right?
Nine, ten o'clock, maybe nowhere near the ten o'clock because they're playing.
And obviously, they have to take into considerations, they wanna be in a place that's well lit. You know, there, there's a couple other things that I'd like to change to make it more, uh, where you're not gonna have people just randomly on a, on a lot. You know. Like to be more defined areas with the lighting and parking and etcetera.
I'm more used to, uh, food trucks in the I'm more used to, uh, food truck in industrial locations, where they usually just serve breakfast and lunch. So I'm, I'm used to seeing any others at different times, but what doesn't make it not acceptable.
So change the time to nine o'clock or nine thirty, ten o'clock.
I'd say nine P.M., seven A.M. to nine P.M. Do you want to do-
Seven A.M. to nine.
Do you want to do seven days a week or six days a week or what?
Six, seven days a week, because normally if I'm gonna get something in the evening time, I, it's, it's, or probably on the weekend.
Right.
So seven days a week if you find-
Then you want to oppose the seven days a week?
It's gonna come down to the bathroom, isn't it? If you're there all that day?
Yeah.
So they can't go in an empty lot because then we have a bathroom. They can't go in an empty building that doesn't have access to the bathroom.
Unless they got somebody to watch it while they leave.
I'm sure they will.
Well, no, I will. So, we have a question here. If you're gonna put them within two hundred feet, let's just say you put it within two hundred feet of McDonald's, and they are at an empty building, and they have permission from the empty building, but they need to use the restroom, but they don't have keys to the empty building, are they gonna go to McDonald's to use the bathroom?
The McDonald's button, if everybody else in the room.
So we'll let them park themselves two hundred feet away from McDonald's, and they get to use McDonald's bathroom and then just leave.
Yes, get McDonald's button, yeah.
So you're saying that somebody's gonna make a motion, uh, all week, what hours?
I think seven A.M. to nine P.M.
Seven A.M. to nine P.M.?
Yeah.
Uh, somebody make that motion?
So move.
Second.
Any questions?
No, I just feel that, uh, we'll let the locations that do that and see how that results with the people that live in those areas. They don't have to deal with it if they're not happy.
Yeah, so right now it's, we haven't changed any zones. It's only in C2, C1, C2, I1, and I2.
Let's go with this, give them a try and see what happens.
Okay.
The people that use it want it, so.
We have a motion and second. We'll call the roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Was there anything else, uh, definitely that you were aware of?
The zoning.
If you want on the weekends, I would, I'd sell.
We're thinking, we're thinking that out, that post chapter seven, we're thinking that out.
So for the zoning, it's restricted to C1, C2, I1, I2?
That's correct. Mobile food dispensing vehicles, yes, C1, C2, I1, I2. And then for the lunch trucks, it's I1 and I2.
So do we want to open that up?
I don't. I prefer to what it stays right where it is. If there ends up being a big need, where there's a huge demand, then change it then, but I'm okay with C1 and C2.
Have you ever been to St. Augustine?
We are not St. Augustine. We don't have a tax base in St. Augustine, and we're not the tourist destination at St. Augustine.
Well, the point is you want to attract people to your historic town, otherwise nobody cares. You have to encourage people to be there to enjoy it, so that they see it and want to stay. I personally would be okay with all C districts.
Can I interject something?
Yes.
With what you're, it's kind of a segue in with what you're saying there. I can tell you, I go down to the Crandling, and there is always a food truck down there lately, and it's parked in one of the parking spots in the, I guess it would be the nine hundred block. And so you're basically gonna tell them that they can't set up there because they're not C1 or C2. And then how do we try to, I guess, you gotta, I understand this has to be in black and white, but look at it from my, my enforcement perspective. How, it's, they're gonna stay down there. They're not gonna move. I cannot make them move from that spot.
What district is that? Is that C3, C4 residential?
I think that's C4, if I'm not mistaken.
C4 is only Main Street.
C4 is the, the historic.
And it's historic. Isn't there a CRA now? Isn't that part of?
The corner of Calmuprey and Delaney is C1.
That's, okay, it is C1, so that is allowed. That's why I just want to make sure that you understand that, and the Boys and Girls Club, I frequently see one in that parking lot as well, off of Verona. So is that also within, I mean, that's a pretty good thing to have in that, you know, it's kids out there playing ball, and people on Saturdays playing football and all that. I mean, they set up, I've seen two of them in that park.
What's its zoning rate on?
I don't.
Um, that's, that's public. It's, um, it's city owned, so according to the ordinance, they're not allowed on city property.
But he's talking about the being a parking space on, uh, is that a same parking space?
There, everything there is city. There is no public parking anywhere around that park. I mean, I'm sorry, there's, other than the, the N.L.K. deli itself, and the parking lot that's there, it's all public, and then everything else is residential around.
Part of the city right of way, which is prohibited.
Correct.
Anyway, I do this ordinance.
So is, is a lunch truck allowed to pull into the park and sell stuff?
They can use parks according to this ordinance. If you want to use parks, you can let me know.
But there's a difference between lunch truck under Florida statute and the food truck.
Right. That's what I'm saying, is can a lunch truck pull up for thirty minutes, sell their food, and leave?
Now, they can't stop for thirty minutes. They're limited to fifteen, because those trucks come, it's, the kind of, construction workers come, get their food, and then they leave.
What I'm getting at is-
If you're talking about the mobile food dispensing vehicles.
Right.
Then they, it takes them a while to make their stuff, and so they're there for quite a long time.
Set up, take them.
Yeah, and so you're talking about, you know, taking apart your park for private community education. Now, I think it's, you know, it has a problem constitutionally because you're basically allowing somebody to make money off of your property.
No, I absolutely agree. What I'm getting at is that I do occasionally see like ice cream trucks pull through the park. You know, fifteen kids run up there and get some ice cream and then go back to playing.
We, we address the ice cream trucks, so they're allowed to stay for five minutes, I think it is.
I got you, yeah.
So, I mean, those are, those are addressed.
Okay. Did someone have ready-made sandwiches that they also pull up for five minutes?
That's a lunch truck, and they, they've got fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes, okay. Okay.
If you have a quick question, um, on page five of sixteen, I'll turn it over to Dana for a second.
Which side?
The original.
The original, okay.
Page five. Yes, page five of sixteen, C4. There was some discussion of, I heard some council members saying, oh yeah, well, they could park multiple trucks on one parcel, or we could put them all together in an area or close together. And number four specifically says that only one food dispensing vehicle shall operate on any one property at any one time. So since we're making changes, did we want to remove that so we can allow them or no?
I would say move it so they can cluster and have an event for some.
Well, special events are totally different. That's something you can prove, as such. If you want to have, um, food trucks on all parks somewhere, you know, at some point, then you need to remove that particular provision. I don't, I don't know whether they would even say still allow, still have parking in these kind of halls.
I'm thinking probably like on a church property or something.
As long as they have their required parking spaces for church.
If they want to have VBS, you know, summertime thing, they got food trucks for the kids to come up, and there's a hundred kids that go there.
But if you're, then you're talking about a special event which you can approve by permit.
Well, they would have to come apply for that.
So to interject on the special event permit, from my understanding from our discussions with Mike, that special event permit is really for like road closures. If you have something that's so big it's gonna close a road. So if it is like a smaller event, like, you know, I run a vacation Bible school before, I'll take like a hundred kids, and I've had like the fire, the police department come before, a food truck is a good idea. Um, in a case for something like that, you know?
Yes. I, I would be in favor of taking it down. I'll make a motion that we remove the no more than one food vehicle, food, mobile food dispensing vehicle shall operate on any property at any one time, represented in C4 on page number five of sixteen, the original packet.
Second.
Any further questions?
I'm sorry, you said C4. You're looking at the zoning or C4?
Five of sixteen, item C4.
Okay, C.
Page five of sixteen.
Oh, five of sixteen.
C4.
If you're looking at three.
I'm looking at three.
If you're looking at three, three.
Yeah, I'm looking at three.
All right, we'll call a roll.
It's four, four fifteen.
Yeah, you're looking at the same thing you're looking at.
Yeah, four fifteen, C.
Okay, so it's not five and fifteen.
Not on the, the, to go where you're looking.
Let me explain something real quick. They're talking about the original packet that's in our book, okay? Jerry keeps referring to one that is not in our book. What I'm referring to is the one that is in our book, because that is what they're going on with.
Okay.
In the book.
But this right here is what Kim said was the one that we're doing.
Okay, well, it's not.
So now we have, okay, so now we have four different things.
We do.
Yes.
Please call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
One more thing.
Go ahead.
I also heard discussion regarding the bathrooms, and I just wanted to clarify that the proposed regulation number five states, "Mobile food dispensing vehicles operating at a site for a duration of more than three hours shall have a written agreement available upon request, which confirms that employees have access to a flushable permanent restroom within three hundred feet of the operation site during the hours of operation." Um, and there was question on the public's use. Did you want to amend anything here to also state that the public should be allowed to use a certain bathroom?
What are you trying to, I don't, I'm not trying to provide no bathroom, but they're supposed to be there.
That's true. No, it's just that they're not working.
Yeah, and the whole idea is, is, is transient, is, is mobile food dispensing vehicles, is they come, when people come to eat food, and they leave?
They buy, the whole needs to be out there.
And they don't leave, it's like, you know, they just sit there and eat the meal, you know, like it. But I'll be, we had it originally where they weren't supposed to have tables.
Okay.
Okay.
I think we're fine with that.
Thank you.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
It's just something I don't know that anybody's thought of, but I know the two hundred feet issue is great, I have no problem with it. But what if there's, it can, I know you have a, something for special events. Would that constitute, let's say, a grand opening? Like, we have new businesses and they, they want, they're, they're right next to Taco Bell, but yet it's just for the day. It's a grand opening, and so does that mean no food trucks can come back to, to that because they're within two hundred feet of said restaurant? Or like, I know a bank, actually got a call on one of the Center State Banks, they're gonna end up having a, like a grand opening, and they want to have some food trucks there, but that's right by the Olympic Restaurant.
But, but it doesn't matter now because they took out that they can only have one per property, so they can-
But I thought it's still two hundred feet away from another. Did I miss that one? I guess I did.
It's still two hundred feet.
So then they're within two hundred feet of the Olympic, so does that mean they can't set up in Center State Bank?
Yeah, they have a special, special permit.
Okay, so, and that verbiage is in there, that like for grand, I know a lot of the special event, people think it's like the Fourth of July, the five K run, where you close stuff down, but that, that, you're not closing any roads, uh, for that. It's just a grand opening, so it's something to think about.
Right now, we don't have any regulations on special events.
Oh, we, we do with fireworks and all that, and with tents, we have fire actual issues with like fireworks sales and all that, so they have to come and get a special permit for that.
Yeah.
With like tents, with, you know, more than two weeks, plus the fire, but yeah, that's fires.
I opposed a special event ordinance, uh, six or seven years ago, and, um, it was like, uh, we're really not interested.
It was thirty pages long.
Did you guys have something to add to that?
And I said the time. So how many words would you like to put into it?
Did you guys have some? Okay. All right, so, I mean, as far as having a exemption for an event, I, I think we should be basically be able to exempt any of the rules that we so choose. You guys, as far as, as far as a feet away, how many can be in a certain area, um, you know, you might want to have an event that's on city property, of course. Um, you might, if you're closing down roads, you're gonna have events that are on rights way, all of that. So obviously, we have to be able to exempt that. So do we need to add a special provision or just simply say all regulations can be exempted and special permits, per view of council?
Yeah, no, it says that, um, exception to this was for special events.
Right.
That's under, um, seven dash forty-nine. Regulations, I wish I had to show them.
If you're looking at the original, the original packet is on page five, section twenty-six dash eighty-five, exception.
Okay.
I only want to look at one thing. I want to look at another.
Exemptions from this article may be made for special events permits, if deemed appropriate by the city council under the circumstances of that event. So that's, that's pretty okay.
But I do think, I think we need to remove the word permits, because in the original Hitting and Zoning Commission meeting, we did have discussion back and forth on what items would actually require permits and what would actually require business hats. And if a special event permit is really for road closure, um, then we might just say special event, period, and you can have, you know, exempt them if necessary. But we don't have to make them close roads and get a permit. So we can get rid of that.
Gary, do you agree with that?
I agree.
Well, yeah, until you get regulations for special events, which I highly recommend, I highly recommend it, and I still do it right now.
Okay.
Because you, you need to have some regulations, those types of things, where somebody wants to have a thousand people on the property, you know, what do you do about that? Even if they don't want to close any roads, you're gonna have quite a bit of effect in the area, so anyway, yeah.
So we need a motion for, to change section twenty-six dash eighty-five, exceptions, item C. Exceptions from this article may be made for special events, if deemed appropriate by the city council under the circumstances of that event.
So move. Second.
We have a motion and second. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sullivan?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's see what else we can find.
Thank you.
Uh, there was one section, additional requirements for undeveloped properties, uh, where mobile food, mobile food dispensing vehicles are located on undeveloped properties, following additional requirements shall apply. The mobile food service unit must be set back at least one hundred feet from any existing residential development. I, I don't see a problem with that. Uh, the property available to the MFPV shall have a minimum area of at least one thousand square feet for parking to accommodate at least three vehicles. I don't see any problem with that. Um, I would more or less want to prevent them from going on a vacant lots that is just an all grass or all dirt area. I think if you're gonna have a little food truck, you need to be, get permission for, to use some kind of a parking lot or something. Some kind of paved or concreted area, not just a, a grass area.
People make that motion.
Did anybody share that?
Before you go there, I have a question. The one, the food truck that you say is on Delaney in the C1 area, is that on the grass?
No, that's on a-
So there's an undeveloped parking lot there as well?
Parking spaces there, but they're not purely behind, I don't know, so I can see that.
And there is- There's, there's parking spaces per se. That's where all the cars park, but are they designated or is that, no, I don't see so, but that's where they park. That's where everybody parks now.
But Randy, that place that you speak of is, that, that, in my opinion, they should be asked to move because they are taking up, uh, that's a private parking spot.
I don't disagree, yeah, because they, and that particular one actually is being towed by another vehicle. It's like a trailer. So it's actually taken up two spots. But again, I tell them to move and they don't move.
Yeah, but they're on city, that's a city runway.
Let me just address that real quick. There's probably other things that we can do, but number one, violation of city ordinance is, is also misdemeanor. So if, if it gets to that point, we can actually make it a criminal violation. Number two, we can get, we can go straight to court without code enforcement citations or special magistrate. We can go straight to court and get an injunction, and that'll be enforced by the judge, you know, subject to, yeah.
And I agree with Randy. That, they usually set up there after hours. They are, they are there after hours, so. But as far as being parked on, uh, a pavement area, there is certainly- They are, they are, they are there after hours, so, but as far as being parked on, uh, a pavement area, there is certainly areas on the south side that food trucks do park on private property that's not paved, so I, for one who would not want to add in that they must be on a paved area.
Paved or concrete?
It's neither that, it's a grassy area.
And it's a dirt area too, they're just worn out because they've run over the grass and lots of.
Right. Yeah, but the point was to, so that it can't run up the grass, so they can't create a dirt area and that it's easier to clean because it's not in grass, it's on a hard surface that you can sweep and see the trash and get rid of it was the point.
Now, this area is not like that though.
Well, I'm saying maybe they shouldn't be using that area, maybe use a different area that is.
Everything else is an empty lot. Well, I'm the one who would not want to add that in here.
Do they have parking spaces?
City parking spaces, yes.
All right. The, uh, section on page. We, we didn't make a motion.
All right, so that's not gonna be added in the paved area only?
Nope, nobody's making a motion?
Yeah.
But, but by not adding the paved this area, you are allowing a grassy hill and it could be tall grass and no one's gonna buy food from this, you're not gonna wanna walk through there, so.
That's the other side of it, is that more than likely people aren't gonna wanna go to a place that's all grown up.
Right, then maybe they won't come back there again.
Right. All right, page number four of sixteen, uh, section twenty-six dash eighty-four, item B three. Uh, it says, selling or dispensing foods to customers in a moving vehicle or otherwise engaging in drive-up sales. Uh, as far as the otherwise engaging in drive-up sales, obviously that would not discourage people from driving a parking, getting out and buying food, right?
No, that means, you know, person hangs out the window to that, the food truck, the food truck hands the food, which is dangerous if you don't have proper.
Right.
Drive-up food.
Okay.
And elevations can be substantially different and so on.
Yep. Not a problem with that. I think that's, as far as the, uh, the zoning goes, I don't think, did we ever address the zoning?
Uh, you didn't finalize anything, so far it's just limited to the ones they have here.
Okay, so what? C one, C two.
C one, C two, uh.
I wanted, I, I think, but I want to, I think were just the food, are the lunch trucks.
Okay.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with.
As far as food dispensing vehicles, I will be okay with being in C one, C two, C three, C four, I one and I two.
Is that a motion?
I make that motion. There would be, mobile food trucks would be allowed in C one, C two, C three, C four, I one and I two, basically every commercial district.
Okay, that's fine. I don't have a problem with.
Is that a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Saldon?
No.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
No.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. I think that's all I have. Anybody else have any changes?
I have a question for Jerry on page seven, um, section, well, number five, not section five, but number five, C five. You had talked about occupational license. Are we still going to require an occupational license or did you say it has to be a, it has to have another name?
No, they were changed, the name was changed several years ago and, uh, we still have in our code, it's occupational license, but that's a state statute, it was changed business tax. And, um, conventional wisdom among some city attorneys that I know, who I respect too, um, believe since it's a tax, you know, license or registration, it can be charged, you know, uh, you know, like you can charge anything, any other person that, uh, uh, start business.
But it has to be listed in the UCC, I mean, we have to have it already in our code as a food truck. Is food truck already in the code?
Uh, I did not check that. And I'm not sure that you can add categories, came out, but, uh.
I don't really think you can add categories to it, I remember that you're set with what you have.
Yeah, and maybe it's done like a restaurant, I suppose, it's just that more limited hours, of course, the way you all modify it, it does, it does, it doesn't have more limited hours than a restaurant.
So does that apply for lunch trucks as well or just the food trucks?
Food trucks, I think the like, the less, uh, lunch trucks would be more of a possibility, but it doesn't, uh, you know, you can otherwise, this, this would not prevent that, you could have that.
Not prevent?
Charges, occupational tax, uh, business tax, if you're, if you're still charging. There is a section here says that, um, you can't charge it to, uh, itinerant ones, it just come in, leave, come in, leave. Uh, food trucks seem to be more permanent now than, than before, but if food trucks, you know, maybe not. I would have to do some research on that, find out whether we can charge those trucks.
So that being the case, if you can't charge them, then you can't issue a permit, so they don't need to come to city hall to get a permit?
It's not, it's not a permit, it's just like a tax.
Okay, so, but they're not, they're not one in the same?
They're, no, they're not. You get, you get a tax receipt basically, that's what they post. That's what it's supposed to be.
Any else? All right, Jerry, do you have your, uh,
instruction? I have the recording.
Okay. All right. Very good, so you'll make those changes and we'll come back?
Yeah.
All right.
Just a second, Jennifer, is this gonna go back before the, um, P Z? Yeah, so it's gonna go back before the P Z, because the change is just.
Okay.
When you draft the, I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, no, I was just gonna say, I just referred to the city attorney on that, I mean, we're taking things away, we're not really adding anything.
You're not accepting the recommendations of the, of the, for the most part, but they are adding the two, uh, the two areas, the official C three and C four. Uh, areas, so I think that really is a whole issue.
And can I ask, you've been planning about doing zoning on an M at some point? And we don't have it yet in our code in our zoning, would we have to amend this ordinance later on if we added M to the, um, land uses, the category uses?
What's it, what's it, yeah?
Manufacturing, light manufacturing?
I thought that was probably, I thought it was a best word.
No, this would be where they would be able to build into the C four area or C one or preferably in the C four to occupy some of our illegal indoor storefronts. Uh, you know, we talked about this in a previous council meeting where we wanna add an over or a layer of M for someone to have a clean.
If that happens, then we, we can always get that changed.
I mean, you don't wanna just throw it in your mouth, so you have to do this all over.
If we change our zoning to add a whole other category, you know, we're just, we're gonna be putting that P in that M spot.
That, that, that would have to require all of some characteristics.
Can I just add something quick to see, uh, when you brought it up? That's gonna be in our next agenda, right? The one you've been working on, cause you're gonna recommend it's not an M, it's a C and you wanted Jeff to be here.
Yeah, Jeff Schmucker on our staff has been working on that, I, I don't have any details, but.
Okay.
It should, it should be on the next agenda.
Very good. Anything else? You have a mental line?
Nothing else.
Very good. All right, thank you. Thanks, Jennifer.
Nice to see you.
Item number twelve, additional information requested on Brickle Building, or Jennifer?
Okay, I'm back, um, and I have a brief PowerPoint.
Yep. Wrong one. Sorry.
Well, I'll be pulling that up. I did bring some extra zoning maps tonight in case we leave it on, I'll just leave them up front if anybody wants.
Awesome.
Thank you. Jennifer, in the future, do you think you can get CRA maps as well?
Absolutely, yeah.
That would be great.
Yeah.
Whenever you guys are ready, just take it away.
Okay, um, well, good evening, once again, Jennifer Coto Salisbury with the Central Florida Regional Planning Council. Um, we were asked to provide a brief overview about the building located at two east Main Street, otherwise known as the Brickle Building. Um, as everyone knows, it, it's owned by, I believe, the Avon Park CRA. Um, and the property size in total with the building and parking is about one acre. The future land use is downtown commercial and that allows for, um, several retail uses and also residential, including multifamily residential, um, at a density of sixteen units an acre, and that's the umbrella, that's the future land use. The zoning is C four, um, which is mixed-use commercial. The property itself, um, we had measured out that the building itself is about a third of an acre, so about fourteen thousand five hundred and twenty square feet. And then the parking area is about two-thirds acre or twenty, twenty thousand forty square feet, and that image there is kind of is a rough drawing of where the parking and the building are located. And then we were, we were asked, you know, how many units can, dwelling units can you get in the building itself and the way the code is set up, you're allowed to have residential above retail. The C four zoning, which it is zoned today, allows for a maximum of four dwelling units an acre. Um, so today you can have up to four units an acre unless you rezone the planned unit development. If you rezone the planned unit development, you have the potential of the future land use, which is sixteen units an acre. Now, the other part of that is that the code says in C four, which is what it is today, each unit must be a minimum of eight hundred square feet for the livable unit. Um, I think if we go to the next slide, um, Jeff had calculated this out when he gave the presentation planning zoning board a while back, um, but because the minimum, um, square footage for, um, the C four is twenty thousand square feet, um, we had calculated based on a third of an acre, cause you can't exceed four dwelling units an acre in C four. Right now, you could have one unit in the building, now if you built more on the property, you could have more dwelling units. Um, again, the acreage, if you use the building and the parking and you said no residential will occur on the parking, then you could have up to four in that building. Um, eight times four, eight hundred times four is what, twenty-four hundred square feet, so hypothetically you have enough in the building itself. Um. Sorry. Yeah, good man. Um, you're, you're, you're still okay though, um, but the key is that you cannot exceed four dwelling units per acre, so you would have to, um, make sure that that parking stayed with the building, uh, when it was sold, cause you can't exceed four units an acre. If you rezone the planned unit development, you could get up to sixteen. The reason why that conversation came up, I think years ago, the conversation was sell off the parking and what would you have left for the building, but you get into density issues there. So if I have not completely confused things.
So, and on the units though, what if it's a two-story building, you could double?
The, the code in C four allows residential on the second floor, residential over retail, I believe, the way it's written, but, but yes, you could have an apartment, you know, double that, yeah.
So the fourteen thousand square feet, is that the base level or is that both levels combined?
I.
I believe it's just the base level.
Sure, okay.
I, I think it's the base level, I think total, there's a little bit closer to twenty-five thousand square feet in the total building, um, and then you're also gonna have hallways. So the question to you is, can we simply give that building a variance?
And what's direct? What you say, variance, because you would be creating circumstances that, that, um, are a problem, it's not like, it's, it's shapeable water, but that's sort of, that's sort of situation.
So the way I see it is we should do, what is the best use of the property regardless of our rules and regulations personally? So I would say that this building is, if you have fourteen, if you actually have, uh, twelve thousand five hundred square feet up top, we do have a minimum of eight hundred square feet per unit, which I think that we should stick with, an eight hundred square foot apartment is pretty dang small. I don't think we should encourage people to build smaller than that, so with hallways and everything like that, I don't think you're gonna reasonably be able to get more than ten units upstairs if there wasn't a rule in the book, right? So is there a way that we can just simply give that building a variance for up to ten units upstairs, commercial downstairs, and then simply feed, the one point seven spaces per unit, which would be seventeen spaces to that building?
You would have to rezone to the planned unit development. The variance would not be a tool to achieve a higher density, you would have to rezone the property.
If you can't use variance because you want to have something different, it has to be, uh, something that is really by unusual circumstances associated with that property.
According to what?
According to law.
State law or, or is this?
State statute.
State statute, okay.
And on the common usage, you certainly point to your ordinance and, and, uh, certainly we can change that because then people, well, I don't particularly like only having a two thousand square foot house on my property, I want a fifteen thousand square foot house on the property, or I don't want any setbacks, I wanna run it all over the edge of the road. Those are all things that we, that we don't want and, and that's a, you have a variance, but.
But isn't that the purpose of a variance?
If we were the country, that's the most criteria, uh, the, the criteria actually, the ordinance has to be, and that follows, uh, laws throughout the country.
Okay. Okay. So if we go with.
PUD. Gives you more flexibility.
PUD allows us to do, if we did not include the parking lot with the property, we can do how many units?
Five.
Yes, yep.
Five units?
I definitely don't wanna give up that much parking space for a more unit, because if you want, if you want sixteen, that'd be, would take it out, you know, more to the parking.
Well, that's assuming that there's actually, they're all full and there's that many people that want parking.
Well, could that be a negotiating tool? You know, if someone comes in with a plan and says, okay, I wanna do this and I want to do more parking, we can negotiate that in some way.
Yeah.
The, the idea was to more or less make it simpler for everyone that's applying and say, look, this is the realistic highest use of this property.
Yeah.
Here you go, it's packaged up, give us your number.
Yeah, the most basic, and if they want something wow, really extraordinary, we're totally that, we're fixing it, we're cheap.
Right. Yeah, the whole point of, of keeping the parking is just to allow businesses that surround it, as we've said many times, to be able to still conduct business.
But being C four, they don't need parking, they can come inside, they have a sidewalk, the, you know, city parking is available everywhere on this.
They still need the one point seven foot unit? Yeah, no, it's just a matter of practicality because there's only, yeah, one or two spots in front of each one of those apartments, so. Okay, so if we went to PUD, it would be five units, you're saying?
If you did not keep the whole one acre, correct. If you kept the whole one acre, um, I mean, you have the potential to get sixteen.
Okay. So how much of the parking lot would we have to include to get it up to ten units?
To get up to ten, um, of course, I'm just cheating right now, I'm using Jeff's chart here, but if you keep twenty, twenty-nine thousand forty square feet, you can have up to eleven units. So slightly less than twenty-nine. I'm going to Councilman Bernard, it's my mathematician tonight. But probably like twenty-seven.
So you, you would have to give them twenty-seven thousand square feet of apartment?
Probably total, that would be the building and.
Oh, oh.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, and we have how much of just parking?
Uh, can we go back on the slide? Another slide. Uh, oh, I'm sorry, you do have twenty-nine thousand forty square feet of parking, I apologize. So that's just your parking area, the twenty-nine thousand forty and then the fourteen five twenties, the building. So that's just your parking area, the 29,040, and then 14,520 is the building, which gets you to about an acre. So I apologize if I answered that incorrectly.
You know what, Jeff, according to this, it's 20,000 units, but that might not be. But when that parking lot was redone, I think some parking spaces were removed. We figured out, and all that grass put there, and that molder was put in there as well. So there's probably less surface area working there now than there used to be. I don't know, I haven't entered it, but that was factored into the property appraisal when that parking lot was done.
Yeah. So we did, we do have now that parcel that's adjacent to it. The problem is, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense for that parcel to go with this, because there'd be parking across that street. So it would more or less fall in the city to have to build up that parking, which is something that we more or less probably don't want.
No need to do it.
Okay. So do we want to try to add in?
I'm good with that, I think that the higher option is a more palatable thing for someone to buy it, otherwise it's just way too little to.
Are you saying add in enough of the parking?
Add in enough of the parking to allow up to 10 units.
Okay. And then we're s-
About half the parking.
Right.
But that's okay, I mean, it doesn't get, I mean, it's, people park up and down Main Street. It's, having a parking problem is an awesome thing for downtown, in my opinion. But there's plenty of parking in the back and the front on the side.
Well, it's also highly unlikely that they would actually build 10 units.
Yeah, a mile or two, it's hard with eight.
Right.
Lot of fire, lot of spray. The unit itself.
And they could very easily build three, you know.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it, with that, giving them the 29,000 total square feet to allow up to 10 units.
So move, I'll make that motion.
Okay. We have a motion, I second it. Any further discussion?
Assuming our math is correct.
Yeah, assuming our calculations are correct.
Just noting that a rezoning would have to be done.
Right.
Just sort of, thank you.
Right. Okay. So do we have a roll?
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. So we want to proceed with trying to get the language correct and get a rezoning done?
Wouldn't we, wouldn't we want to say in our sale or our marketing that, that we will rezone it if you plan on doing this up to 10, or if that's a negotiating tool for them?
It's a contract zone. You're going to do a zoning, or you say you'll have to rezone it to this. And then they're going to ask, well, is that possible? Well, probably, but that's, we can't take any different decision. They're not going to like that, so either rezone it, or not.
You say we'll be done with it, get it done.
Rezone it, because if you don't do that, you can't, you can't go with a contract. Well, we'll rezone it if you buy it. Yeah. That's contract zone.
So with the PUD, are we, are we still keeping to the commercial downstairs?
I would defer to you all that you could definitely do that.
Okay, so long as we can keep it commercial downstairs, I'm fine with it. Call it what you will.
But let me ask you, with all of these changes, if you do a residential upstairs, you've got to include a boarding house.
In the planned unit development, we would write in the short title that it would allow for up to 10 apartments.
But not a boarding, oh, apartment, separate units, each individual.
We would use that definition, that would not include a boarding house.
Okay.
And, and do we have a number on how many people are allowed per unit?
Um, oh, they know.
That's weird, that's weird.
Yeah, so in the city of Avon Park, a family is defined as anyone that is related plus two unrelated persons or a total of four unrelated persons. So every dwelling unit is allowed to have up to four unrelated persons if they're all unrelated. And a boarding house is defined as, I literally just looked this up today, so I should know it. It's like three, I mean, like three rooms or more where food or money is exchanged. So for it to qualify as a boarding house, it would have to be a minimum of three rooms, and there would have to be an exchange of funds and/or food. But for a single-family dwelling, you can have up to four unrelated persons.
And that's true for every apartment that currently exists in Avon Park?
Correct, and it's often a misconception, well, unless there's been some type of special exception. It's often a misconception that if you have multifamily, that you could put more than one family per dwelling, but that is not the case. It's still one family per dwelling, it just, it's a matter of whether or not they're connected.
I see. Okay. Okay. So do we want to proceed with going for a rezoning? I think so.
I think so.
So do we just simply instruct CFRP to start that process?
Yes.
Very good.
And it would be resoned to planned unit development, to allow, if I heard that correctly, up to 10 multifamily apartments.
Got you.
Okay. So move.
Hold on.
So move.
Basically, the motion is to go ahead and authorize that to bring us a rezoning.
I can't hear what you're saying, I didn't hear what you said.
I can't.
The motion is to authorize Central Regional Planning Council to create, to put together a rezoning application and, and everything.
There you go. We have, we have a motion, a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. All right, item 13, 18-wheel truck, or a large truck not associated with that business parking in all commercial districts.
And so this is an issue I've talked with code enforcement about, Randy is here, so you can probably address the issue better than I can. But we really need to put some deep into our parking requirements, because 18-wheelers are basically used in parts of the city as their parking space for the night.
Okay.
I was under also the impression, a lot of it has to do with the buses as well, the migrant buses. I know it's self-explanatory that they cannot be parked in a residential area, I understand that. But I think recently, ones come up where, like the back of Hendrick's Grocery, there's, there's three buses parking back there that have nothing to do with that store. But currently, I can't find, and I've, I've asked, that there's, there's no regulation that says they can't park there. I've also had businesses calling, prospective buyers of land calling, they could property, asking if they can park 18-wheelers on their property overnight if they, they did let their car wash, if they did a truck wash. So I think they're trying to circumvent, I, I don't, I don't see anything currently that says if you have 18-wheelers parking in a commercial spot, they have to be affiliated with said business where they're parking. And I think that's what's happening, is people are just parking arbitrarily migrant buses, 18-wheelers, because they get, it's not like, like long air conditioning where, you know, they park their vehicles there at night when they go. That's, that's fine, but it's allowing other people outside of their own business to park there, and I think that's where we're seeing a problem, because Hendrick's did give those buses permission to park there. And I can't find anything that says that that's a use of.
No, there's nothing on or out either, but there, but the regulations are out there, I have found them in different cities. So if you want to do that, as he suggested you do, to try and clean up that circumstance, then we direct us to go ahead and put that together.
So move.
So I'm going to do that.
Is there a, second?
Second.
Motion, a second question.
So what is the motion to do what now?
To put together an ordinance to keep, itinerary, 18-wheelers just parking, you know, at their convenience. Instead of 18-wheelers that are making deliveries and someone inside the city, which, you know, that's generally how they break down the other city ordinances. Trucks can be on and off property so long as they're in direct, directly delivering or, or receiving goods at that place. But they can't be parked overnight for convenience.
Got it. So what about the 18-wheeler, for example, someone that does that for a living? I mean.
A bus, it's 18-wheelers, well.
Okay, but what if they do that for a living, and they have that parked on their part, on their personal private parking?
That's up to you, I mean, that's, you know, clearly it can't be a residential, but if they've got a business and they're doing it for a living, then that's up to you to consider, but you might want to limit the number. But you have somebody like the air conditioning trucks that he's talking about, long, you know, they have their, their own trucks, and they don't let people take them home, so they're parked on their site. But we can work around that, which is what we, the biggest concern is, you know, people coming from outside the city saying, okay, well, let's park here for the night, I'll, I'll go, you know, sleep in a hotel or something.
But that still doesn't address a residential dude that owns a truck, and he has a four-wheel, I'm sorry, a big truck, and he parks it as personal property. He may own the lot next door to his own personal home.
You can't do it in residential district, right?
So you cannot park a four, I mean, we call 18-wheelers in a residential area, period.
Just like you can't, we just ran into that migrant bus. And I keep saying, it's my, that's the, that's the issue I get called on all the time. They're parking the migrant buses in residential areas, they're firing up at, at 5:00 in the morning, and it's waking up the neighbors, the smell from the diesel is obnoxious. That's the biggest thing that I give the call.
Yeah, I would just want to point out also that a lot of times businesses will have semis coming from many states away. They may arrive at 2:00 in the morning, but that business isn't going to open until 9:00. I don't think that's wrong, for the truck to basically stay in their parking lot until the business opens to get unloaded.
That's up to you, we can, we can work around that, just a matter of the timing, but.
It's obviously something that doesn't happen every day, it's just.
If you're going to, if you're going to basically, you know, say, if they can stay there overnight, then there's no sense to put together the ordinance, because you won't be able to tell who's actually doing the delivery, who's not doing the delivery. It's usually active delivery. You're actively delivering, you can have 18-wheeler backed up to the place or picking up.
So I guess if they're waiting to be delivered, that's active delivery?
You can define it as such, if you wish.
Yeah, the overnight parking of a bus in an unrelated business, I think, is not, is not part of what the code should allow.
Plus, those, those trucks that are on the way to deliver or something, they're going to have a bill stating that's where they're going on such and such a day, exactly.
Okay. That's what we will do.
Can I ask some questions, as we talk about 18-wheelers? Randy? Oh, okay, we, we, I, I know about the buses over at Hendrick's. Okay, I see the buses, and they're neat. They're very neat to park there. Whether they're on there or not, fine, up to them. What about all those big trucks that's over there on Hatchet? And Williams Gray Court off of there, and has 200 tires off the truck? Are we addressing that too? And I know they don't own the property.
CSX, it goes on the issue.
Huh?
Isn't that the railroad? It's on CSX property?
They own, CSX, they own, oh, they own Queen, like Queen Coward Avenue.
Yeah, well, the trucks are parking down there, that's CSX property that runs next to what I call the old SIM center, which I guess is now a RNC.
And the old freight mill.
If they're on CSX property, it's hard for us to regulate. Not impossible, I'll look into that, you know, but there's a lot that we can't do with the railroads, because it's federal preemption.
I got it, I understand it. Can we clean it up? Can we make them clean it up? You've been there.
Yeah, I've seen them, yeah, I've seen, and this has been a problem since I became in this position. But again, it comes down to, do I have the authority to tow those vehicles off that, that right-of-way? Or do I not?
But even, even cleaning it up is, we dealt with this about 10 years ago. You know, CSX was letting weeds grow up all over the place on their right-of-way, and it was a real mess. And I, I did the research on it, there's really nothing we can do about that as a city. But I called the regional manager for this, it's up in the land or something, and told him, you know, it was, you know, a mess, and that he had to be fixed, and so on, and he took care of it. As far as I know, it's been fixed.
Okay, I'm not talking about Louise.
I know, but same thing here, we, we can get a hold of them, whatever the regional director is for CSX, and say, it's making a real mess in the city, you know, can you clean that up?
This may not be CSX, I'm looking at the area, and it's not CSX.
Yeah, they're very untouchable.
The three she's talking about belongs to RCLA, where the trucks are parking. And I think we addressed that a million times. Yes. The trucks are parking, the young lady that calls all the time, she called me first, and then she'll call everybody else. And I think that area belonged, that we discovered that road belongs to RCLA.
So if that's the case, then we can use code enforcement to cite the item?
Cite the traffic, again, here we are, again, who am I citing?
RCLA, the property, yeah.
RCLA.
Oh, I don't think they're allowing, I thought, I thought where they're parking is railroad property, but I guess.
No, they're, they're just, they're on the east side of Queen Coward Avenue, you know, right?
Right, and, and, and if you see Alberta, and, and really, I know you know what I'm talking about. If you see Alberta, the first part of it, right across.
Oh, you're talking about where the freight mill is.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I thought you were talking that the road never runs through.
I, I see that, that pretty much has cleaned up, been cleaned up. But you know what I'm talking about, because there are at least 40 tires that they're changing or, or leaving the tires. Can we just address that?
It's awesome.
I live over there.
All right, so we'll find out who owns it, see if we can't clean it up.
Thank you, Duke Energy.
Okay. So we'll see what we can do with Duke Energy. All right, so we have a motion, a second on the floor. Any further questions? Seeing none, we will call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Councilmember Gray?
What's the motion, I'm so sorry, please tell me what the motion is.
It's a motion to have Jerry put together an ordinance to program big trucks.
Yes.
Sorry. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yep.
Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Item number 14, first reading ordinance 06-2021, amendment, amendment to capacity fee ordinance.
Would you all, would you all review this, is this what you wanted? Because as you recall, the capacity fee ordinance, but you want, you want to put back in something about payment plans. If that's what you want, we'll go ahead and read it.
Section 2, payment plans for capacity fees. Following put sections are added to provide for capacity fee payment plans. Doesn't have further details. Talking about those plans, no payment plan shall see a period of 240 months. Plans providing for financing in excess of $5,000 shall also include a review of at least two credit agency reports.
That, that's pretty much the same as it was.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead and read it. So this is an ordinance in the City of Avon Park, Florida, providing for a settlement to the Council to amend the city code by adding section 98-2 to Article 1, Chapter 28, adding provisions for payment plans for liquid water and released water capacity fees under certain circumstances. Divided reflections and foreclosure, divided for conflicts, divided for complication and appeal of conflicting zones and ordinances, and for resolution to provide acceptability and provide perfect payment.
Do we have a motion?
A motion, we approve ordinance 06-2021.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any further questions? Seeing none, we'll call a roll.
Councilmember Gray?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sutherland?
Yes.
Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes. Thank you. Item number 15, discussion of donating old books to Avon Park Museum, this is Councilmember Sutherland.
Yes, I have several suggestions from some of the members from the historic society that they would like to take a look at these books, whether or not the city can, I don't know if they're old enough to be disposed of, but rather not be disposed of, because there's so many unique, a lot of handwritten stuff in there. So I'm not sure what exactly is in there, if there's, that you need to retain.
There are, they are, they have met their retention years ago. They have met their retention years ago, but I wouldn't get rid of them, because they are very historical. Some of them go back to the early 1900s. I was looking at one, pulled one out the other day, it was 1923 ledger book. There's also tax roll books down there. I would say there's probably altogether about a dozen books, maybe they would take one or two here and there. There's also some old documents down there that I have put in another room so that they didn't get thrown out, they're very old as well. The problem with these books are when people are going to look through them, some of them, the pages are very brittle, so they're just going to, the historical society won't know how to take care of it, I'm sure of it. It's just going to be, you know, a situation where they can be damaged fairly easily. But they do need something done with them, because otherwise they're just going to sit here and deteriorate.
Isn't there something that, that an agency can do to deserve those type of brittle books?
Isn't there something that, that, uh, an agency can do to, uh, preserve those type brittle books?
Yes, sir.
Because there was something that came to us years ago, I don't know if you all was here, probably South Florida State College at the time of the June college. Someone came to us and said, it was trying to do some type of restore something.
Yes, there's companies out there that can restore books, yes.
Yeah.
Right now, as books are, if, if anyone wants to look at them, they have the, the right to look at them and there's really no way to, to take care of them. I mean, are we going to require people to come in with gloves and, you know, handling them?
I would just simply ask the Historic Society, do they know how to do that preservation work? And would they be okay if we did that preservation work? As far as them going to the Historic Society building, as long as we don't keep them at the city, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, it's kind of a point of the museum. But just whatever we have to do to actually preserve them. So if they can do the work, God bless them. If they can't, then let's find somebody that can.
Yeah, well, I was going to suggest that if they come in and look at them and they have the capacity to do it, they've got these air conditions, whatever it is they have in there to preserve books and things. They do have the capacity to do that. Uh, donate them, but I'd like for them to take a look at them first and see that they can do the work. They're, aren't they like big, they're, they're huge. So as long as the council is agreeable to that, then they can go within look and go from there.
No problem here.
No problem here.
It's public record. Have them come by. Yes. All right. Last but not least, city manager updates.
Eric?
Your sixty seconds have begun now.
Well, I didn't think I'd have too much. I got the website. Everybody got ahold of you about the, our new host, our now dot city. We're actually using the hosted, actually, David, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm more into this stuff. But we used to host our own basically, or had our own. And we had to take it down here recently because there's more and more bad guys trying to break in. There's no Kyle Bradley. So took it down. So now it's going to be run actually through Microsoft, who will host it. And we'll have to, um, have all the security on it. So it's, I know, so at that city, but anybody sending you anything, dot cc is still coming through to you. And if there, if you can't get on your phones, iPad, both of you, call in. I'm sure David will walk you through it. With the email up and down, I don't know if you got the email I sent you probably a week ago, that, um, obviously Corbett got some bad information. We're still in the running for one of our infrastructure grants. Did you get that email?
Not, no. That's excellent.
It's good news. Um, as you know, I passed on because Corbett said we didn't, but it was, it was informal. The last week and a half ago, I guess, we got, been contacted by D E O. We're still in the running for the water, um, drinking water grant, which is six hundred and seventy thousand two hundred, or six hundred and twenty-two dollars for, just shy of seven hundred thousand dollars. Last week, Wednesday, we had our, uh, uh, meeting with them, online with them, met with them, they met with us. For the, the virtual presentation, actually, I asked Carl Cool and Rick to do it. And I asked Carl to actually present it because Carl's a very good presenter and Carl's always did an outstanding job, um, for the city and Rick helping him out. And they got ahold of Rick because I got this. They're going to actually do a, an on-ground, an onsite visit, um, Wednesday, March thirty-first. So we're still in the running for it. So some great news.
Excellent. It's not sixteen million, but it's something.
No, no. And, well, we haven't heard anything on the other one, so I'm not holding my breath, but who knows? Um, follow-up to our, uh, hazmat problem out at the airport. Rick, um, got together with Catherine M B from E C T, the consultant, and worked out, because we had talked about doing the, um, industrial, um, hazmat stuff, getting it out of there, the arsenic. And they're going to start doing it on Monday, April twelfth, if you, you know, too.
Well, we're getting a cost estimate together. I, I think he's come before council because it's going to be.
Well, this is, uh, this is the one for doing the, um, the industrial, the smaller, she's going, says she's going to meet out there.
Right. But even that, I mean, just the excavation costs alone, well, the slower cost can be, uh, ten thousand dollars. And that's not including the labor and the material excavated. So we're going to be in there with twenty-five thousand. When I'm looking at it right now, it's going to be probably seventy-five thousand dollars because we don't have the ability to find it ourselves. We're going to have to get with Republicans to drop off skids, drop off, uh, disposal bins. We'll fill them up with military and document, not the, uh.
Okay, so she's still going to meet you out there though and point out the areas?
And can I interrupt? The, what's, the sense of urgency is like impending. If we don't do this, we're going to get fined or shut down or something. Because where I'm going with this is, I thought that if we were going to be working our contract with the fam people, that the airport was as is. Because that money is off of a loan, that we will continue to be paying on a loan, but we don't have any airport revenue to pay off.
Well, I, I don't know all the details, but I can tell you regulations, both can only lapse.
Well, but we have ninety days before or so from that.
We, we can find that out. The last time that we talked to Catherine, actually, she got back and said, hey, what are you guys going to do? So I don't know, P D A's on our calendar.
Well, P D A requires that you do clean it up. You can't have the use of, uh, hazardous substances or lingering forever or it can spread by groundwater to other places.
The, the other component to it was checking the water wells. So I'm assuming that work was done.
Well, that part is going to be, here's the deal. If we just do the two feet, the industrial, uh, commercial grade arsenic, then we have to have a monitoring every single year, two to four thousand dollars. So what we're doing is a cost benefit to see if it pays to get rid of all of it now and we won't have to have yearly monitoring costs. Or if we just want the disposal of the, uh, commercial grade arsenic, uh, soil, then it'd have two to four thousand dollars per year monitoring cost.
Okay, I understood that there was, there's water testing wells out there, there's surface wells and there's deeper wells. She was going out there to test the deeper wells and see if it had gotten to that point. Has that work been done?
She hasn't done that yet, no.
Okay. Because that would expose an even larger problem. So I thought that was going to be the first phase.
Correct. And she, she's scheduled to come out here to test, not only the wells, but the, still, if we have it back at the airport, then we can use for some type of estimation.
Okay. Is it worth seeing that? Anything else?
Um, and just one thing. I got a, uh, a letter this morning, you know, an ad boy for some of our people. And this comes from the owner of eighteen-eat restaurant. I'll just read it quick. It's a short one. Says, "Just a little note, commend the city of Avon Park in taking on the undesirable risk or task removing the unsightly overhang on a brick building. Not an easy job, not to mention a dangerous issue. The gentlemen doing the job are very professional and understanding of the local businesses in the needed area. At the end of the day, all of the staff, they had taken down, all the stuff they had taken down was removed and you had no idea they had even performed such a messy job. Thank you for the continued effort on making a wonderful city and especially downtown area of Avon Park a place that more businesses want to be a part of, um, as part of their professions." So that was nice that he, uh.
It's likely never existed.
It is. And it was David Roberts. Um, he's been a great hire and he's got all his guys working together, his team, and, and did a great job. And Rick let him and all of them know that they got an ad boy, man, he's good.
They did a fantastic job. And it also started a rumor mill that the brick building was being torn down. And I got at least five or six phone calls that we should not tear that building down. And I said, well, if you don't want it torn down, you better come by it, buddy.
That's it.
All right.
And then can I add one thing?
Sure.
Thank you this past week, um, for your, your, um, telephone calls, your text messages and prayers. I appreciate it.
Mark, you're doing a fine job. It's a hard time for you. We know it is, but you're a champ. So we appreciate everything you do, bud.
Keep me in prayer.
Anything else for the good of the city? Seeing nothing, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
motion adjourned, please.
Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned.